I'd like to call this meeting to order. Do I have a motion to convene into executive session?
Motion to convene into executive sessions.
Second.
Approval of exec-- excuse me, executive session.
Did you close out public session? Okay.
That's my fault. We-- this is, we have to read this.
This is all part of public.
This is public. Exact motion to convene to executive session four. Then it goes shows, then we motion close. So approval to executive session minutes for January 7th, 2024. Near a teacher negotiations pursuant of Rhode Island general laws forty-two, forty-six, five, A, two. Collective bargaining. Superintendent's evaluation and performance goals pursuant of Rhode Island general laws forty-two, forty-six, five, A, one. Job performance of an individual. Review and or approve matters which relate to privacy of students in their records pursuant to Rhode Island general laws forty-two, forty-six, five, A, eight. Homeschool requests. Ratification of near a paraprofessional contract pursuant Rhode Island general laws forty-two, forty-six, five, A, two. Collective bargaining.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion to close executive session. No, mine.
Now, we're gonna talk about this.
Sorry.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Again, in executive session, we had two votes. One was to approve homeschooling requests. Then one was to approve executive session minutes. And now let's have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda to include regular session minutes from January 7th, 2024, bills from the general fund in the amount of $1,133,280.8. Grant fund bills in the amount of $32,529.11. Northwest special education bills in the amount of $801.14. And school food service funds in the amount of $34,794.28.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, as I did, thank you. As I did that, um, right before public comment at last meeting, I'm going to read my same statement to, um, set the, uh, to give the public an awareness of what public, um, comment is about. The purpose of public comment period is for this committee to receive input from its community. Public comment is an important function and is critical for us to listen to the community and to consider what we hear when making our decisions. In general, it is not a time to receive direct responses from the school committee. However, we may provide brief factual clarification if necessary. Otherwise, the public comment section is for you to voice your concerns without engaging in debate with school committee members. It is important for you to know that you may not get the answers to your questions or concerns during public comment period, but that does not mean you will not be given answers. There are other opportunities for you to get your answers. For example, you can call or email any school committee member. You can now reach out to your school parent pact representative. This process is designed to allow consistency and fairness and to allow everyone a chance to be heard without unduly disrupting the meeting flow and allowing the school committee to complete its business in a timely fashion. As a result, in order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak and an opportunity for us to hear your concerns, I will allow each person to come to the mic once during public comment. If you feel that you have additional comments after your turn is over, then please address them at a later time by reaching out to a school committee member or the superintendent. Having said that, we appreciate you coming to this meeting and we thank you in advance for expressing your thoughts and to be clear, you are also invited to comment on any agenda item, not just during public comment. Having said that, it's public comment.
Oh, hi.
Um, that is not for us to hear in the room. That is for people at home to hear. So just your name and address.
Okay. Rachel Menard, and I live at 111 Elmdale in Situate, Rhode Island. Um, I'm a parent of a seventh grader at Situate Middle School. And this year we noticed a concerning change in the attendance policy. I would like to address it. According to this new policy, my husband and I are no longer able to make important decisions about my child's health and well-being without approval from the school or great inconvenience to my family, including extra costs of work time. And Dr. copays, and I think this is a violation of my parental rights. My family believes in the importance of education, but not at the cost of my child's health and the well-being of the community. When my son wakes up not feeling well, we make the decision to keep him home for a day. We call the school to inform them he will not be in and we monitor his condition. If he feels better in the afternoon, we send him to school the next day. If his condition worsens, then we take him to the doctor. If we send him back to school without a doctor's note, that is considered an unexcused absence, even though my husband and I, his parents and legal guardians, have determined that he was not fit for school. The current policy would have me send him in feeling unwell, expose him to other students and teachers before he is excused by the nurse, at which point we have to leave work to go pick him up, which is an inconvenience and a health hazard to everybody. Our other option is to take off work to bring him to the doctor for every headache, stomach ache, and sniffle, which includes a copay and lots of hours that frankly, my family cannot afford. And I think if I ask everyone here, do you go to the doctor every time you have a headache? I doubt it. Every sore throat? No. But for some reason, I'm expected to do this for my child. My family believes that the current policy is discriminatory to children with chronic conditions. It is dangerous to immunocompromised students and faculty members. It promotes the spread of potentially fatal illnesses like COVID and flu, and it trespasses on my right as a parent to make health decisions for my child. My request is that you roll back the current policy so that a parental call for an illness or injury-related absence is considered an excused absence. Thank you.
Um, I know you said your name was Rachel, but I didn't catch you last night.
Menard.
Um, Ms. Menard, I see you wrote that down. Would you mind sharing that with us? So I can actually spend time, more time looking at your concerns?
Yeah.
And then looking at the policy?
Yeah, that would be great.
Thank you. Do you mind handing it to me?
Oh, sure. I can email it to you all, too. I have it individually.
You can email it to me. My email address is on the website. But, um, personally, it's hard for me to absorb everything you said right here, right now. But I want to sit down, I want to read your concerns. I don't want to look at that policy again.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks. Any, any other? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Lori, can you just provide clarification? Um, the difference between an excuse and an unexcused absence?
Excused absence is an absence that we received a doctor's note for. An unexcused absence is any other time a student is absent. That language is pretty standard across the state. And, um, we were sort of encouraged to look at our attendance policy, other schools' attendance policies around the state, given RIDE and the governor's huge push around attendance and, um, 10% of absences. And RIDE doesn't care if they're.
That was my question, I think I'm asking.
They don't care if they're excused or unexcused. When you hit 10%, they label you chronically absent, even if they're excused.
So, and I'm just trying to gather an understanding. And I certainly hear the concerns that you're bringing forth of, but is there really a difference between an excuse and an unexcused absence? Is that right? Like as far as?
Not in any substantive consequence. No.
According to RIDE. But also according to our, our policies.
We don't do anything different heads if they're excused or unexcused.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Charles Collins, 14 Main Street. I'm sorry, Charles Collins III, 14 Main Street. Um, so I just want to ask, um, is the superintendent, um, still going to be employed by the school department? Is there any, um, investigations into that? We've seen a lot of stuff in the paper. Are you planning on resigning or?
So we understood, from what I'm hearing, you're concerned about the superintendent's employment.
Yes.
Um, I'm not going to have a dialogue with you about the superintendent at open comment, but you can reach out to me only because this is not a dialogue thing. It's all, what I'm hearing from you as a member of the community is that you're concerned about.
Public safety concern. I'm, I'm, I know there's a lot of complaints about the work environment, employees, all that. Um, I'm more, want to be more specific to the fact that, um, she, I, I just want to know what gives her the authority to obstruct the police department investigations into crimes potentially committed inside the school?
So again, I, I'm not, I can't, I'm not going to have a dialogue with you about this, but I am writing down your concerns.
Okay.
Um, you're concerned about her authority?
That doesn't really help the kids, though, does it?
What does not help the kids? You're aware.
Can't have an open conversation about this? Because I'm just going to go to the council meeting next and I'm going to talk to them there. And I'm going to see what they're going to do. Because I understand that you guys think, because she's protected by you and the AG's office, that, you know, we can just pretend this stuff isn't happening. But see, I found a workaround and I'm going to be revealing that to the public. You know, we can talk about it here or I can go to the council meeting and bring it up in front of the town council, which the town council will confirm what I'm saying because that's my workaround.
So, Collins, just, just so you know, that what you're saying is not falling on deaf ears. What we hear from the community is information we take in, write down, re-watch.
But you are aware that she's obstructed the police department.
One more thing, I'm almost done with my sentence.
Okay, go ahead.
Rewatch, and then we use that information, this valued information, when we make decisions. But we're not making decisions here right now.
Going on for two years, there's been multiple instances and no one's doing anything.
So I, I would like to, um, address the piece that I have no knowledge, I'll speak for myself. I have no knowledge of any of our school employees, um, obstructing the police department. I have, I have faith in our, and I'm assuming you're referring to the Situate Police?
Yes.
Um, I, um, I have faith that if the Situate Police felt as though any member of our school department was obstructing justice in any way, shape, or form, that we would hear from them.
Well, they're the only reason that she hasn't been able to do the things that she's done. They're the only ones stopping her. So, I mean, if the kids aren't going to get any support from our government, if the police department isn't going to any, any support. I mean, if you're not going to let me talk about it, I'll just talk about it at the council meeting when my father's president, you know? So, I mean, we can do that, but then once it comes out, it's going to come out and then it's going to be in the newspapers. And, you know, if you want to make it a big deal, we can, we can go that route.
To be clear, we, we do want to hear from you. We're not shutting you down, but we're not going to engage.
I think if you really want.
Oh, my gosh, Mr. Collins, I am trying to be polite and you're cutting me off.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
It's okay. I do it sometimes by mistaking myself, so I pass no judgment. We do want to hear what you have to say and we are, but we do not engage in conversation and dialogue during, um, public comment. It can actually become, and Mr. Finnegan is, is an expert in this, an Open Meetings Act violation to start having dialogues that are not, it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, but if you're not going to put stuff on the agenda, then how are we ever going to talk about it?
Well, that's a different conversation.
Okay, all right. I see where this is going to go. All right, well, I, I invite you all to watch the next council meeting and we'll go from there.
And I also invite you to reach out to any school committee member if.
I don't believe I should have to because I believe, maybe not you.
It, you're welcome to.
I'm kind of gas, but I know some of you know what's going on and I can prove that. So the fact that it hasn't already been on the agenda is disturbing to me. And I shouldn't need to come here and talk about this out loud for you to put it on the agenda. It should already have been at some point within the last two years because that's how long I've been looking into this. And there's plenty of people that are elected officials that I know that know what's going on. And yet no one's doing anything. So we'll go the hard way. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Richard Finnegan, Ridge Road.
Did that go?
Richard Finnegan, Ridge Road. I've been doing a little looking into what the duties are of the school committee and what they can do to educate themselves. And I came upon around general law 16-2.
Mr. Finnegan, I think people in the audience are saying they can't hear you.
Oh, I'll speak up a lot.
You can even turn sideways and kind of face.
I'm always tall, I speak. I'm trying to calm myself.
When you speak, people listen.
I, I've been looking into what are the, the, um, the authority of the school committee and what their duties are. And there's a program at Rhode Island College. There's professional development for school committee members. Round general law 16-2-5.1. It's an educational program for school committees that include instructions in labor and labor relations, negotiations, bargaining agreements, employee contract analysis, school finance, school law, duties and responsibilities of the committee, duties and responsibilities of the superintendent, ethics, requirements of the opening meeting laws, student achievement, achievement, strategic, strategic.
Strategic?
Thank you. Planning and educational standards and students' assessment. And it goes on. I, I, and, and your policies and your school policies state that you have to take six credits a year. Now, I'm not going to ask if you have been doing that.
You can ask because I do them. Rhode Island Association of School Committees actually runs these courses.
They do, they do. And I, I, I would hope school committee members do get involved with this.
We do pay and dues for that, so we may as well take advantage of the courses that we're taking.
So I, I, I do. And I think one of the biggest things in this education program is negotiations and contracts with, um, the teachers' union.
Certainly is one of them.
And what I would expect of the Situate School Committee, that the school committee negotiates the contract with the teachers' union. I'm, when I started in the courts, I was a young, young attorney. And Situate had a case. And what happened was the judge says, where's the school committee? The teacher union was there, teachers were there. There was only one person, Juwukuyami, one member of the school committee. This is 9:00 AM in the morning. Judge says, we'll recess until 2:00 PM. And we'll see if the school committee shows up. They will be here. If they're not, I'm going to order the sheriff's department to go get them. So I, I'd hope you take your duties seriously and, and just like the.
Thank you for, for letting us know. And we, like I said, we do pay our dues for Rhode Island Association of School Committees.
But you get my point.
I do, I do very much. But you know what I did not know is that these courses are offered by Rhode Island College. I just don't know who pays for them. But I will look into it.
I, I don't know who, who pays for them. But I'm sure we can find the money to pay for our school committee members to take these courses because this is very important.
Well, actually, we don't have to pay for that because Rhode Island Association of School Committees offers training. And even if you can't make that training in person, they videotape them. So then you can watch it at your leisure and still get credit for it. So it really is a good system.
I saw it, they're online.
Yeah, they are.
I just want to thank the, the school, um, superintendent's office for doing a great job in the superintendent. Um, every time I reach out to them, um, they get back to me right away. I appreciate what you do and I appreciate what your staff does. And I would wish that more members of the community would understand that's a resource to go to. And the superintendent's office is always open and welcome comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Finnegan, I'd like to also let you know that, uh, New England Tech also, um, provides all those courses you were referring to.
Okay. I don't see any hands raised at home. Any other public comment? Wow, I need new class. Um, so the person, oh. Ms. Coletta, um, obviously state your name and address.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Bobby Coletta, 9 Brett Drive. I'm just curious if the school committee or superintendent has made any, um, progress on surveying the teachers?
Ms. Coletta, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Are you unmuted now?
Can you hear me?
I see the, I see that she's talking, but I don't hear her.
Can you guys hear me? Hello? Hello?
See the mic moving so I can tell she's trying to communicate, but we can't hear.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Ah, sorry, we still can't hear you.
It sounds as though folks on those Zoom bridge.
No one in the audience has public comments, so I don't want to. We do have a long agenda.
They can hear us on, on Zoom, but not, hello? It's the audio in the room.
Well, I apologize, um, for this. If we get you.
It's the audio in the room?
Hearing you sometime in the future. Um, we certainly want to hear what you have to say, but for the sake of this agenda, which is very long, I am going to move on.
It's the audio in the room.
Actually, um, Ms. Coletta, if you want to reach out to me or any other school committee member on what you wanted to say in public comment, if we don't get to hear from you because of this tech, technical thing, then please reach out.
It's your audio in the room?
I'd like to offer too that if, uh, Bobby, if you can hear us.
Yes, I can. I don't know if any.
I'm going to offer, um, my cell phone number is 401-996-3709. If you want to call me now on the phone, I will be happy to put you on speaker next to the microphone.
Can you give it one more time? Hello?
Oh, there we are.
Can you guys hear me?
Oh.
All right, sounds like, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, because I think folks in the Zoom could hear me, but you all in the room could not hear me. Anyways, uh, good evening, everyone. Bobby Coletta, 9 Brett Drive. I'm just curious if the superintendent has made any progress on, or the school committee for that matter, a, um, a survey to the administration, the, um, the staff of the respective school departments? So not specifically, I know the superintendent has made an effort with a PAC committee of parents, but I'm curious if, um, the last time we, a few times ago we spoke, there was going to be, you know, a little bit more detailed surveying of the actual staff in the schools to understand a baseline of overall satisfaction, culture, et cetera. Have we made any headway on that activity?
Want my answer?
Sure.
Yes, Bobby, um, we have, um, a consultant that, uh, we are going to meet with to design, um, the survey, uh, and that person is on vacation, so they'll be back in about a week. And then we have a meeting, uh, scheduled with that consultant to help us design the survey, um, so that it's designed and valid, um, and then we will get that out. So yes, we are moving forward with that.
Okay, and what is the, what is the target dissemination date of that survey, right? And I, I ask because here we are, you know, months and months later, and I know things move slowly, but, you know, year, you know, a year is going by now. So what is it, what is the anticipated date that these surveys could be disseminated by? When should the administrators be looking for that to go out to them?
I, I can give you a date after we meet with the consultant because I don't know how long it's going to take him to put that survey together. Um, so I don't want to misspeak and say we can have it out by March 1st. Uh, I don't know what his timeline is for, for developing that. Um, as soon as I know, I will.
Yeah, this, this is a paid consultant, right?
Yes, I will be sure.
Yeah, I guess my, my only ask would be that if this is a paid consultant using our tax dollars that we set the guide, uh, guidelines on when our, our anticipated or expectations are for them versus their, you know, what, when they can do it, but we should be pressuring or putting some, obviously with, there's a lot of, uh, swirl and conversations happening. Um, so, you know, the sooner this goes out, the, the more information, concrete information the committee has to act on and, and yourself as well, Mr. Superintendent.
Agreed. We will work to get it out as soon as possible.
I think it's a realistic expectation. Um, again, I, I yield to what, um, Superintendent Andre said is we can't speak for other people. But you're right, if we're paying someone to do a survey, I think a 30-day turnaround time, if we're able to, you know, by the beginning of March, um, I think that would be realistic. Um, you brought up another point and I was going to, um, bring up during, um, the comment section at the end, but I am going to request, um, I'm a little disappointed it wasn't on this month's agenda, um, is we, we really, as a district need, and particularly during budget season, um, we need to look at the HR, HR function within the school department. Um, we are the largest employer in the town of Situate. Um, and, you know, I think 150 employees, maybe closer to 200. I don't have the numbers. Um, I don't know what the answer is. I don't know that we have the bandwidth for a full-time HR manager or, you know, exec, but we need something and it's, it has not gone on deaf ears. And now is the time, um, so I respectfully requesting that be on, um, the March agenda. And by then, maybe we can look into what options, what other districts are doing, what other options may be out there, are there consulting companies out there? Um, this, this needs to happen. So I think that's a follow-up to part and parcel with what you were talking about as far as, um, you know, staff, staff surveys and, uh, you know, a safe place for staff to, to go to be able to, um, express concerns.
Thank you all.
You're welcome. Public comment? Sorry, I usually do the people in the room first.
Yeah, I was thinking.
Okay.
It's, uh, Matthew Allen, 159 Woodford Road. Um, I did reach out about the PAC meeting and I have, I don't want to use the word concerns, worries, um, I did reach out, um, about how the parents, I know one person with the principal meets with the superintendent, but, uh, which was answered. And I did talk to Mrs. Tumi about it, um, about, uh, setting up something so the parents could email or message the parent that is representing Hope. Um, but I also wanted to know how we know, how are we going to know what is actually being said? I don't know if you guys are taking notes or if we're getting our answers or if they have to respond back to us. Um, and I would just like to know about other concerns of other schools because we each are our own, have our own set of issues on stuff that needs to be discussed. That way we're not repeating so, something Clayville said last month or North Situate said last month. Um, so I just want to know if there's going to be some note-taking or if you guys are going to get a copy of the notes of making sure like everything is being followed through?
Can I jump in on your question real quick? Just Lori, maybe while you're responding to that, if you could give like the, um, audience like a one-minute synopsis of what the PAC committee is about and, you know, what the function is and how it's being executed and pulling those answers?
Sure. Um, the PAC committee is a group of, um, parents from each, um, school representative. We determined at the first meeting that we had, um, this month that, um, instead of one representative, it felt like we should have two from each school. So I know the principals are going to get a second name, um, to me so that there's always a backup person or there are two people there. Um, and this last meeting, uh, we talked about because parents had expressed a concern around the budget process and transparency. So while the administrators were there, Stephanie was there and we, um, went through what the budget process is, the timeline, the system that we use, the principal's role in that, um, process, presentation dates to school committee, when we go to town council, what that looks like, where potential cuts come throughout the process, how we go back and handle those. Um, that information apparent, uh, suggested that we post it on the website. We have done that. We sent it out through the town listserv at apparent recommendation. Stephanie's going to do a video, um, that we will post on the website. Um, that explains the process and the dates. Uh, one of the parents asked that next month we talk about curriculum. So the curriculum director will join us and talk about what kids are learning, what the curriculum is, answer all curriculum questions. So as parents come forward with information that they want, we will make sure that the next meeting addresses that.
How does that information get back to?
The, the mechanism was for those parent representatives to bring it back to their school and, um, parents at their school. If somebody has another recommendation for me, I'm happy to consider it.
I was at that meeting and, um, it was, it was a great roundtable kind of setup. And I think, um, I had the same questions you did. I actually was going to ask you, because it was so informative and it was so, I thought it was a great meeting, that I was like, okay, now we have to get it out to everybody now. But I think, I think it's, it's new. So I think we have to find out how those parents will be able to communicate that to everybody else because they have great, they got great information that night. They really did. So, um, now I think we just have to figure out, make sure those parents get the information. Like maybe if they could put their, I don't know if they can put their contact information out for everyone, like if you had a question for the person at your school that represent your school, you have a question about it?
Just to add.
Yeah.
But you need to come up to the mic so people can hear you.
I had talked to Ms. Crawford, the representative from, and she actually ended up making a Google form that I included in the monthly calendar. That way it's not her, like, personal contact information.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. I'm like, I don't know if, yeah. Yeah, okay. This, this way they, they, there's a contact, so if people have questions, they can go to that person.
The only reason I bring it up is because I had some parents messaging me knowing, like, I'm to the school committee, how to get ahold or even watch what you guys talked about. And I'm like, it's not, not opened to the pub, like it's just to you guys. So I was fielding questions that night about how to get on and how to get their messages to everybody. So the next day I asked Mrs. Tumi about it and how, since it was the day after the meeting. So I didn't, I know Patty does a lot of notes and stuff, so I didn't know if she had sat in and typed it out and it was something that you guys passed to the super, uh, the school committee? So they were aware of what you were saying?
So you bring up a, an interesting point. I think at the next meeting, we can talk to the, to the group and, and talk about, do we want to make it a Zoom meeting where parents can, you know? do we want to make it a Zoom meeting where parents can, you know, zoom in and at least watch the conversation? And so let us talk about those.
Yeah, just something to think about, like I said, or, like, I don't want to add more work to, like, hey, you need somebody to, like, type it out so we could send it out, or something like that. But like I said, some of us, like I said, it's a new thing. So we were just wondering how to get our messages across, so you're not repeating the same thing. Oh, we talked about that in January. Now Hope is bringing it up in March. Well, we already talked about it. That way, it just keeps going, and so we're not beating everything with a stick.
It's a good, it is a good point.
So just a couple of things, that was what I was thinking about. And I just want to make sure the school committee knows. I knew you were there too, but I didn't know if you were relaying back, because I know you guys aren't supposed to schmooze together. So I didn't know how that was getting relayed back to, if anything applies to you. Like, it comes up with, as much as you guys go back and forth, so.
We do get superintendent reports.
I didn't know if it was going to actually be in it, like, what you guys discussed, like, that's why I was just trying to.
I think these are all fair points, and just like it was brought up, it's new, right? So, but I agree that we should maximize this as best we can, right? Like, if there's such great information, and I've heard wonderful feedback, we want as many people to have that information as possible and have mechanisms in place. And I'm not, my understanding is this is not an inclusive meeting, right? It's not something like, oh, no, you can't come. Not everybody has the ability to come at those times, but I think whatever we can do moving forward, you bring up some great points, like.
Yeah, like I said, I just don't want to keep going in circles. And that way, you're informed what they talked about, so you guys aren't being like, I have no idea what you're talking about. Oh, it was brought up at the last meeting. So, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, George. May.
Good evening. George Cosmo, East of Hopkins Road. Since the question of budget came up, both in Ms. Pendergast's response to a caller and in Superintendent Andrew's response, please be aware that at its opening meeting, the Budget Committee accelerated the schedule. All deadlines are two weeks earlier than they were in what was distributed by Karen Beatty in January. I hope she's been in contact with you, or you have been in contact with her. But my objective, I guess, is to make your life more difficult. So, so job accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you. Though, we did not know that. In two weeks is a half a month.
The Budget Committee felt that the schedule was, was
Too tight.
Too tight at the end, and so we moved everything up by two weeks.
Thank you. Anyone else for, so actually, Ms. Alera, does that mean that we need to have a new budget schedule? You don't have to let me know that now, but if we do, just let, just inform us of that. Like, you don't have to answer me right off the cuff, since you just found out about this eight seconds ago. But certainly, take a look at that and see if we need to revamp our budget schedule. I'll give you more than eight seconds to think about it. Any other public comment? No one at home? Because I can't see with my new glasses. That costs a lot of money. All right, so thank you, everybody. We will move on to, we have got bond counsel here. We'll just have to wait for John Anderson, and then we'll, we'll jump you right on in as soon as Mr. Anderson comes. Otherwise, we will not jump to the administrative budget presentation, because I think that's going to take more than three minutes. How about the superintendent's report? Do I have a motion to move the superintendent's report out of order?
I make a motion to move the superintendent's report out of order.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening. Talking about communicating in parents' voice, the Rhode Island Department of Ed is currently administering its annual survey works, the family survey. So that is an opportunity for our family members to provide feedback about our school community and our children's opportunities to learn. The survey results are really very useful when families participate. So I'm asking all parents and staff to participate in that survey. Your views on matters like the safety of your children at school, the ways students are taught, the conditions of the schools, and how connected you feel to this school community are really important to us. By taking the short survey, you can help our school and the district leadership and myself, as well as the school committee, to continue to make improvements. Responses are anonymous and cannot be linked to any one individual. And no one can tie your responses back to you. You can take the short survey online between January 21st and March 31st. And I want to thank you for taking the time to help us to continue to grow and ensure that all of our stakeholders are heard. The enrollment numbers by grade are included in the school committee pocket as we begin our budget work. We will begin kindergarten online registration for next year in March. Those registrations, as those registrations come in, and we get those numbers, I will keep you posted. We are watching the middle school numbers closely to ensure that if we need to add a team or a half of a team, we are prepared to do so as part of this budget cycle. As of today, it doesn't look like that will be necessary, but we do need to watch those numbers closely. The PAC committee had its first meeting last week, and I'd like to thank the parent volunteers, all of the administrators that attended, and Ms. Lori Hart were joining us. We reviewed the budget process and the meeting dates for this year. I already said this, but Stephanie's going to be on video and review the process, and we'll put that on our website so parents can refer to it anytime. We shared the information written on our website, and we sent it to the town for distribution on the listserv. Parents asked for information concerning curriculum next month, so that will be the topic for February. So any parents listening, if you have questions, you can send them to my email. You can reach out through your building principal. You can get in touch with your building representative. We'll try to make sure that any and all questions are answered. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Any questions from the school committee for the superintendent? Mr. Ferrera, is it, am I correct in my understanding that Mr. Anderson is also doing this presentation with you? Or is it, is it, am I correct in assuming that Mr. Anderson is also doing the presentation with you? Would you prefer to we? Okay, all right. That's what I assume by just asking. Good, I just wanted to double-check. All right, we'll keep an eye on him. Ms. Alera, do you feel like you could get the budget to actual, unless there's a lot of, any bombs in there, or just nuggets?
Nuggets.
All right, so I don't know if you can get our budget actual up on the screen? And while we wait for you to do that, if possible, we can, you want to start?
Yep, I can run through it quick.
You don't have to do it quick, just do it thoroughly. No, it says budget to actual. There's a lot of budget in.
There's a lot of budget. I think it was the first one he pulled up, Nick.
Nope. Yeah, there you go. Perfect, thank you. John is on his way.
I did not have an audit update initially, but I do now. The town had asked for an additional week extension to review the draft audit. I have reviewed the draft audit, and our final general fund ending balance is $3,543, which is closer to net zero change in fund balance than we thought, so it's excellent news. I see no issue with the draft audit, and I will wait to speak to Karen. As far as the budget to actual, I hope you've all had a chance to take a look at it. I only have a few items of note to discuss or nuggets, unless there are any questions. I'll start with those. Based on incoming tuitions, one that we finally paid that was in dispute, you'll see, is available now in the revenue, as well as new revenues from incoming students. You'll see a surplus in that line over what we budgeted. We currently have 68 CTE students attending SHS. After these students age out, next year, we'll have 58 current CTE students. That's not accounting for new applicants, but just to give you a rough number while we're looking at revenue and moving into budget season. Yep.
68 out-of-district students.
Yes.
This year. This year.
Yes.
That's pretty amazing.
So this added revenue was offset by increases in healthcare costs in this current budget actual, and transportation contractors due to statewide cost and need increases for servicing specialty DCYF busing. We also had an increase in tuition in other districts that was more than budgeted due to a few students returning to their district or choosing private school. As I mentioned before, we had a new potential DCYF student and an outplaced student costing approximately $186,738 that was not budgeted for. At this moment, we're watching the budget very closely to see how the sudden unexpected costs will affect the budget. And with them considered, we are looking at a small, under $2,000 deficit if all goes as projected. Although this is not just, although this is just a projection, and all is subject to change based on a plethora of items, our plan is to hold tight to the budget in hopes that we can eliminate any small deficit and land at net zero.
Are you done?
Yes.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
How many students, and if you don't know the answer now, that's totally fine and understandable. How many students do we bus and pay for to go to private school?
Do six.
Six. What private schools do we pay busing for? Are there only certain private schools? Or do we have to pay for all of them? Does that make sense? Like, Mount St. Charles, along with Bayview, along with?
Bishop Hill. Bishop Pendrickan. But I will say that we need to find out, there's a change. Jen was just telling me accounts payable in one of the private schools. So I can get back to you on that, but she did just let me know. So I know of those three.
You said Bishop Pendrickan?
Yep.
And?
Mount.
Mount and LaSalle?
Yep. But I did, she told me when I brought up the questions we were talking about the other day, while I was doing the budget, and she said that one school, she saw something, she was going to look more into it, one of the schools.
Because one may be added?
Taken away. And I don't know what qualifies for that. I, you know, I'd have to ask more detail from her.
What's a guesstimate for six students to be bused to these three schools? Can you make up a number? If not, that's okay.
You know, I like to be precise. So I'll look, and then I will get back to you.
Okay, thanks. It's more of a curiosity, but I know it's a discussion on Federal Hill right now about this.
Capitol Hill or Federal Hill? I have a difference.
She's going to, she's going to the Bishop Tavern. I'm going to Fed Hill.
No, thank you.
I just, whoa, what's going on? Calling the boys off.
We're all eating. That's funny. Any other questions for Ms. Alera about the budget? Thank you for that. As we still wait for Mr. Anderson, I, yeah, I think I would like to jump ahead to new business, just so we can keep our business going, to go to discussion, action, vote on the DECA field trip to Orlando, Florida. Is there anyone here that wants to speak to this? I believe it is an annual trip, and it's something that we approve every year. So is there anyone that would like to make a motion so that we can have a discussion?
I make a motion to approve the DECA field trip to Orlando, Florida, 4/24/25 to 4/30/25.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Hassel, I think you're the one that signed it, approved. Is that you? I just have a question on the dates. Your dates say May 27th to 30th? I didn't, unless I'm just reading what that's supposed to mean, right above your signature? If that's your signature in blue. Yeah.
Yeah. It says May 27th, 30th.
Yeah, because it says April 24th to April 30th, and yours says May 27th to 30th.
Do you have a concern with the discrepancy of the dates versus the trip in and of itself? Are you comfortable voting on it with that discrepancy of the date?
Yeah, as long as we get clarification of the dates, I just, it's the trip itself, I think, is fine. I'm okay with the trip.
Lori, any concern on your end?
No, this is an annual trip that the DECA students do as part of their certification and program and competition, so no concerns on my end.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
You good? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Do I have a motion to accept the school calendar for 2526?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Is this, are we still following a state calendar, Lori?
We are. We use the right state proposed calendar as our guideline, and then we ensure.
Tweak it to include our special days.
Yes, we need our special days, and then we, yeah, festival, correct. And then we sit with the union and make sure that everybody's on the same page, and the teachers are all agreeable. And then I bring it to you.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to ratify the NEARI power professional contract?
I make a motion to approve the NEARI power professional contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Any raises in that contract? Can you tell us what they are?
Cost of living raises, if that's what you mean, it's 2%, 2.5, 2.5, and 2.5.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Building committee, it was, well, let me ask this. For the building committee, where are my notes? Hold on one second. For the building committee, how, how often was this advertised? And how was it advertised that we're looking for building committee members? Even though we currently have, you know, because every year, this is like a one-year term, if you will. And we have four community members on our building committee, and they have all reapplied. But we also go out to canvas the community in case there's other talent out there that is maybe newly available, and we just always want to gather the best talent we can in the town. So Lori, or anyone else, do you know how often or where it was advertised, or how?
I saw it listed on the state, our town website, the town email group went out.
How many times do you think? Once? I saw it once.
I recall once.
Was it in the school newsletter, studio?
I don't believe so.
It was brought to my attention that no other applicants applied for it. And in speaking with other members of the community, I said, oh, I didn't know you were looking for building committee members. And I was speaking with Greg Levitch, who is currently the chair of the building committee. And it was just a thought of, can we try one more month to get, to see if we get any more talent? Not more talent, any, a wider range of people, even if it's just backup or, or people who are, what's the word I'm looking for? Alternates, finally found the word. Just to, it's not going to change anything. We have now the four people that are on the building committee that are community members are, have reapplied. So it's not like they are being forced to be on the building committee one more month when they want to get off. I would just, I would just like to entertain the thought, if the rest of the school committee agrees to put a broadcast advertisement out there, maybe on the school newsletters, on the town listserv, on our website, maybe have it on our website, the town website, to do it one more month. I was just wondering what the rest of the school committee thought of that.
I think, I don't see any harm in that, as long as the committee is functioning now. It's not that we're not meeting, so I think that that makes sense to put it out there one more time to see what else be there. I don't think that would harm anything, as long as it's not prohibiting the committee from actually acting.
Moving forward.
Yeah.
The committee is functioning and meeting. We have a lot of projects that we are doing. So if there is expertise in the community, we would welcome. So if there is expertise in the community, we would welcome, you know, more, more minds at the, and voices at the table. So if you want us to continue the advertisement, to reach out again, put it on the town listserv, we'll get it out to the schools and have them put it on their, um, newsletters. We're happy to do that. If you have any other suggestions on where you'd like to see it go, we'll, we'll do that also.
And Lori, we're presently meeting all of the statutory requirements for that committee, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Perfect. So, um, can you make sure this gets on the next month's agenda to, to do this? And we'll just try one more month and I ask anyone in the community to reach out to anyone that you know that might be a good fit to be on the school committee, um, school building committee, um, that'd be great.
If someone was interested, how would they proceed?
Yeah, there is an application. Is that on the website, Patty, that someone could download it and?
Yeah, I'm thinking.
We'll put it on the website so that someone can download the application. And once, um, it's complete, they just send it to my office. Attention, Patty.
Someone in our viewing public may be getting this message.
So, um, I will, um, table that item for now and I just wish our, um, attorney would show up. I don't think we can go on to talk about the next item cuz that's also a Mr. Anderson. The next one's Mr. Anderson. The next one's Mr. Anderson. I can, the water line is Mr. Anderson. I can go to item nine. Um, future school committee meeting start times, this is something I just stuck on here since we're all. What's that? Um, this will take two seconds while he gets his coat off. In, I know that it's up to the chair to start these meetings whenever they please, but um, I would just wanna hear from this school committee. Um, we usually have our starting times start at seven. Tonight you saw we started at six fifteen. It is a long agenda. It looks longer than it really is. And I was wondering if, um, and members of the community as well, if we started our meetings, um, instead of seven, do, would people, and we don't have to come to this conclusion right now because I believe this is something we can do. And started, starting times is something, not a violation of Open Meetings Acts is, I, am I correct in saying that? Um, but I thought it'd be easier since we're all here. It's like, is, is six thirty a good time? Better than seven? Would you prefer these meetings start at seven no matter what? Does anyone really care? I know some people at the table have different work schedules, so I wanna, I just wanna be, it's easier doing it here right now in three minutes or less than by multiple emails. So I was just wanting to hear from the school committee if they have a preference, um, keeping it at seven or is six thirty okay or what have you?
Yeah, I just have a question for you. Uh, when you're saying, say, for instance, you say we start at six fifteen, but that was for the open session. So are you indicating that the time for executive session will be earlier?
I'm talking.
What is the start?
Start time of the open meeting, not including executive session.
So I think I, I'm flexible. I think the most important thing is obviously, um, it's a public meeting, right? So I think it's important. Um, I know historically it's always been at seven o'clock. I think it's in one of our policies or in doctrine to stone somewhere. And I'm not saying it always has to be that. I think, is it, I, I think you think about, you know, um, the public, is it? Part of me thinks earlier is better cuz sometimes these meetings run till like ten o'clock at night. I've seen people sitting here with kids. But then the other part of me thinks about, um, okay, I've got young kids, I gotta get them to basketball, get them to the, I don't know the answer, honestly. I think that we as a committee, I mean, obviously, um, it needs, I can't be meeting every day at two o'clock in the afternoon, do you know what I mean? But, um, I think there can be some flexibility on our end, but I, I honestly may be getting some feedback from the community. I don't know. Whoever's here, speak to it, but if there's other, I think that's kind of a half an hour is a big, a huge difference. Um, that's kind of my thought, though.
Any other thought from the school committee before I go to the public?
I agree. I think the public, it's a public meeting and I would like to see comments from the public, like, um, I, I think, you know, all of us are working, so we can back up a little bit, but, um, you know, if we're putting the meeting at, say, six o'clock, is that interfering dinner or what's, what is better?
Does anybody even eat dinner anymore?
Yeah, I do.
I have to before I come here.
Yeah, and just to say that, um, there's not many people from the community here now, so they can, people can reach out to me between now and, and three and a half weeks.
The ones that are count.
Um, and I know that we have our attorney here and bond counsel, so, um, what would name, address and opinion on start time?
Hi, Jenna Rutherford, three, three, four, Bungie Road. Um, I think to me, it doesn't matter which time. I just think if it's, we choose a time, let's just keep it consistent.
Yeah, okay.
So everyone stays on the same page cuz even us trying to figure out, and I appreciate we go to different schools, but like, oh, are we in the cafeteria? Are we in the library? Are we in the? I'm already trying to figure out where I'm supposed to be in the, within the building, so I would love to just have one time.
All right.
So.
Just so you know that we will be in the beginning of this, of the year, starting in January. We do meet at different buildings, so we, cuz we also have some new school community members can, um, actually go to the different.
Oh, no, I like that.
Okay.
But like, let's not add another challenge by changing the time then.
I, I hear you, I hear you.
It's already an Easter egg hunt, so like, let's.
It's an Easter egg hunt. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, all right, so we'll keep it consistent. Um, that was just a discussion, didn't require a vote, but now that we have, uh, Mr. Anderson here and Mr. Ferrera, uh, I'd like to, um, get a motion to move item six out of order so we can talk about item six.
I make a motion to move item six, um, matter related to the high school well and the Rockland Oaks water line out of order.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make sure you're speaking to the next, next to people at home near you are.
I'm John Anderson, um, the, uh, Citu School Department's, uh, general counsel. Um, with me tonight is David Ferrara, who is bond counsel for the town of Situate. Um, and of course we have Stephanie O'Leary, our, um, director of finance and administration. And given the fact that we have some new school committee members, I thought it was appropriate to invite David um, to, um, brief us in terms of the Rockland Road Water Project. Um, and what exactly is going on and what exactly is the role of the school department with regard to that matter? I'll get it started, um, by pointing out to everybody, and I think hopefully everybody's aware of it, that school department needed to do work on its own water system. With regard to our well that is here in this building. At the same time, what there is a problem at Rockland Row, uh,
Rockland Oaks.
Rockland Oaks, um, in terms of not having frankly potable drinking water. Um, which is crazy, you know, that people have to, in Situate have to live on bottled water because they don't have clean water to drink. Working together between town and the school department, um, and a lot of credit that, for this goes to the past chairwoman, um, for trying to engineer all of this, and engineer is a good word for it. This, uh, essentially what amounts to a joint project, three-way project between the town, the Cituate Housing Authority, which operates Rockland Oaks and the Situate School. A lot of time and effort has been invested in this. I'm gonna turn it over now to David so that he can talk through what has happened and where, and where we are now.
What I do, my point of view is the town, the town council. As you were part of the town in Situate, housing authority is part of the town on occasion, the treasurer, the council asking to assist you.
Can you speak up? I'm sorry.
In financing matters, I can go so far that this level.
I wonder, I just wanna say, if the mic were sideways and your back wouldn't be to the. It is for the, it is for the people at home. It's, the microphone is not for the people in the room, it's for people at home. It amplifies. Oh, does it? Speak closer, please, to the mic. Sorry.
In, uh, late twenty twenty-two, the treasurer asked me to prepare, uh, a bond for the, for the school water project. The, before that, the school committee had been working on a combined water project, uh, with the health department to, uh, enhance your own water supply and along the way, uh, the problem at Rockland Oaks of non-potable water, meaning undrinkable water for, uh, the twenty-four units there plus one. Um, was evident because of the proximity, the only logical source, um, from an engineering and water point of view was, was, uh, the potable water at the school. Because of that, there were financial incentives available through the health department to the schools and to Rockland Oaks. For instance, um, I believe that the engineering work, uh, until projects, much of the engineering work was paid for by the health departments. That's what caused you didn't have. It was a, so in twenty twenty-two, uh, in, in March twenty twenty-two, I prepared the one million dollar bond act with the, uh, interacting with, uh, Mrs. Darius. At the same time, a presentation was made to the town council, what was presented. In twenty twenty, in March twenty twenty-three, a presentation was made by the engineer, Northeast Water, which, uh, conceptualized and was the driving force from the health department point of view. That was the health department's, uh, engineer. They've become your engineer. They've become Rockland's engineer. I'm gonna say Rockland and Situate Housing perhaps interchangeably. Uh, even though one is the place and one is the, the, is the owner, is the owner, which is a constituent part of the town of North, uh, of the town of Situate. It is not, um, in any way, shape or form, under the control of a private developer or anything like that. In any event, so the, the project initially went, uh, the voters at the, at the initial town meeting approved the million dollars for the Rockland, uh, for the Situate schools borrowed by the town. And, um, the project was, uh, went under contract with Iain Uchello for, uh, for less than that. The, there have been change orders, there have been, um, problems one would normally find in old, uh, dating up an old system, asbestos and whatnot. In any event, you are at the, what has happened, the project was split into two parts. One was paid for by the schools and one was, uh, financing that the Situate Housing Authority obtained. At all times, it was intended that some of the school, the work physically at the schools and physically done, uh, under your contract would be reimbursed by Rockland. That was a concept that the engineer developed with the health department. And, uh, it went, it went that way. Not my creation, but that's the way that it is and that's what's, what's happened. We are at the precipice of, of a good thing. Uh, first of all, your, I understand your system is gonna be tested during school vacation. And so that what's, what is in play and is almost, uh, is ready to turn on, it needs to be tested. So the second thing is that, um, you know, after many delays, mostly because of EPA requirements and Department of Health personnel and Department of Health approvals, the Rockland, uh, financing is about, is, may well happen. Why you care? The reason you care is the two, three things are gonna happen. That Rockland, it is proposed that, that the Rockland loan reimbursed the schools to approximately two hundred and ninety-four thousand for work you've done under your million dollar contract. Those are not exact numbers, uh, the million dollars. The, the other thing that's gonna happen is that they're going to pay for well number four, your new well. You're gonna say, well, she won't, the town be liable for that? Well, the, from the inception, the Rockland financing was presented as a loan that the state was going to forgive to the Situate Housing Authority. In other words, there was no actual payment going to be made, even though they were going. So the bottom line here is that your project, which the voters approved a million dollars for, you are gonna get, you, meaning the town, all of us, is going to, all of you is gonna get two hundred thousand of, of a forgiveness from the state. I mean, the state, it's the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, but that's okay. So you're down to eight hundred. It's twenty percent forgiveness. You're gonna get, you, we're, we're asking for three, two hundred and ninety-four thousand back. That number has not been approved, but no one has said no at this juncture. In addition, when you net that out, you are, uh, I believe you have applied for and been approved with thirty, your thirty-five percent housing aid, which I got the groundwork done with your former chair at the legislature to get, to get the legislative approve our rather unusual financing through the infrastructure bank rather than the Rhode Island Open Educational Building Corporation. So that's where we are. There were three, three things that I asked, uh, your council to present to you, which I'll present if you wish, John, cuz in, number one, there is a thirty, uh, there's a thirty-six thousand dollar change order to your contract with Iain Uchello, um, which you never approved. Reason you never approved it is that work is really for the benefit of Rockland. If Rockland project didn't go forward for whatever reason, you certainly wouldn't do it. So it's for trenches to prepare a pipe going out to Rockland. So the first thing is that I would like you to, that's subject to the Rockland Oakgo, loan going through and Rockland paying for it. The second thing, oddly enough, is the exact opposite. It's not a lot of, but there's a four thousand dollar, uh, I in the Rock, the proposed Rockland contract, which went out to bid, which is, is a pipe, if you want it, to go to athletic. So if you would, I would ask you to vote that if the Rockland bonus goes through and Rockland signs the contract and they authorize that work that you paid for the benefits.
The four thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's got nothing to do with Rock.
Yep.
And the last matter is the health department to give you this reimbursement to do the loan to Rockland. But you've created, uh, a public water system, a miniature one, but nevertheless a public water system. You, the school committee has, has here to, has signed an agreement with Rockland already last year. And, and housing approved it, that, that basically lays out the general groundwork for this with the expectation of two things. First thing, of course, is that they will pay you for work you've done. We have an agreement which you've approved that, and Situate Housing Authority is suggesting, uh, a reimbursement and suggesting the number of two hundred and ninety-four thousand, subject to Department of Health approvals, EPA approvals, and of course money from the state to give to Rockland, to give to you. All good. The second thing is, the second addendum was that once the health department asked us to prepare an agreement between Rockland Housing Authority and the, the town acting school department to run, to, of, of what this public water system and how it would be run, that's all been, uh, outlined with the guidance the health department gave, uh, Jason on December thirtieth. There is all these forms and whatnot, nothing that has to, will, will continue to be worked out, so you have to. But I'd like to ask you to, or, uh, ask your council to, to ask the school committee to authorize the chair or the superintendent to do whatever is necessary to get, uh, to finalize the, the the two hundred and ninety-four thousand or whatever they accept. And to finalize any of the remaining details about what happens when we have well number four, we have the pipe to Rockland. And to finalize any of the remaining details about what happens when we have well number four, we have the pipe to Rockland. Well, is the water spewing out of the pipes at Rockland and who's going to be doing this, that? And and uh and and to get full final health department approval. They are. Subsidizing a great deal of us. They are, as outlined, they are going to. Your small system, so they're gonna do some of the testing for you. They're gonna prepare uh. You know, many reports that, you know, such uh province water probably has to do on their own, obviously, because you just can't. You have no reason to do all that. And and I understand we're gonna keep. And everyone's agreeable to keeping the health department's engineer who has managed the construction project, both of them. As for now, anyway, as your in your water engineer. So that's kind of the situation. And with those three uh three requests to you, which I think will. Make things easier because we haven't, nothing is 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 sealed. We're we're making progress. I've been working closely. With your council uh with your former chair and considering to uh move this ahead through this web. Uh they have Zoom call.
It is a web, right? Like, yeah.
Yeah, so. And and that's the other thing. Last thing, I I would, I would tell you that I've spoken to the. Um and interfaced with the with the finance uh with the treasurer of the town and the um. Uh Karen Beatty, the finance director, that when whatever money and and likely what's gonna, the first. As to the two ninety four, what's gonna be done with it. Firstly, it's gonna cover any overage. And there are overages in your construction contract with uh. Not with the contract. You have a budget of one million, really nine seventy for engineering and and. Of construction, you're over that. As as was apparently fully expected from day one. So the first thing is to bring your cost down to nine seventy. And any balance and should be seen is going to go to re- reduce your loan, which may lose you. If you, if you pay down the loan a hundred, you're gonna lose twenty thousand of this forgiveness. But again, you're bringing the project ultimately under what was presented to the financial town meeting. So that's the bottom. So that's where we are. If you have any questions in this web. Of.
It's a creative web.
Yeah.
Right, like.
Not my invention.
But to benefit the, it it really, there's a lot of, a lot of folks pulled together to 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 do the right thing for. Not only the school department, but for our our neighbors as well. Yeah.
So construction wise, I know that our well here on the property has been um. Not well number four, but one of the wells that they found and found the asbestos and that's all been cleaned up and. That's, that was part of this project as as well as that, am I thinking of two different projects? I'm I'm right? In, but that water is not flowing yet. Over vacation.
I don't believe, I I I'm not the engineer, but my understanding was it wasn't asbestos in the well. It was asbestos.
Correct, on the pipes. Correct, correct.
Baby, I'm wrong.
No, that that was my understanding of what.
In a change order.
Correct.
And I could tell you when you signed that change order.
I remember that.
You had a change order in fit in January twenty twenty four.
So at this point, it's just a matter of uh digging this well number, well, digging well number four, getting the piping down to Rockland.
Digging well number four, which you've consented to on on your property, on. Having this thirty six thousand that Rockland's paying for as well as the, as well as the uh. As well as well number four, then the pipe to Rockland, which is paid for by them. Maybe some enhancements, ending enhancements like this fire alarm that the fire marshal wants in the pump house and things of that nature. But your water system, I think, is supposed to be tested and turned on during school and quarinated and whatever else they do. During um.
School vacation.
Vacation. So if that goes well, you'll have a better idea of what is the reality, but you will not have a new well number four until. And 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 the other thing is the. You know, because of the need to do that kind of thing outside of school hours and and whatnot, you know, the costs are higher. You know, obviously. I mean, obviously, you know, the. You know, there are other, you know, the state DOT is probably involved in the trench along Rockland Road and all sorts of other things like that. And then they have a whole extra sort of things to do on their their end at that building. Again, I'm not an engineer, not a water, certainly not a water engineer, but I've heard it enough times that I have a general idea.
So I heard you say that um it'd be, we need to have um a vote from the school community to either allow the superintendent. And or chair to sign these. Is is that on the, is the language in the agenda? Does that allow us to take that vote? I- is there a recommendation from you whether it is a superintendent or the chair? So you're looking for a vote to give authority for the superintendent and chair to, how do I finish this vote?
Take such action, execute such agreements. As are necessary desirable to effectuate addendum number one to obtain the reimbursement. And.
Those are not real words. You do know that. I'm teasing you. I won't be able, I could, I could just take it and read it if you underline it for me.
And addendum number two, which relates to compliance going to put well before in service, furnished water.
Say so moved.
I it's just I say words like that because I don't really know precisely what will pop up from the Department of Health as to what they want next. To to get you the money, which is my goal.
I, it just occurred to me, John, that, excuse me, Mr. Anderson, you're talking and the people at home can't hear you. I'm so sorry. If, I'm sorry. If I want to go back and rewatch this, I won't hear what you're saying either, but I'm not gonna. Oh, actually, you can use Patty's mic. Use, if you want to use Patty's mic.
Yeah, okay, I'll go down to Patty's mic.
It just occurred to me that you're talking away and and people can't hear.
What Mr. Ferrara is referring to in terms of details is, for example. Um as a public water supply, there will have to be annual notices to consumers in terms of, you know, what's in the water. And is the water a hundred percent been meet all standards or did it have too much of this one day or whatever? Those notices go out to town water supplies. I get one for um, you know, where the town where my farm is, is town water. I get a notice in the mail once a year from that. Somebody's gonna be responsible for doing, making sure those notices go out. Um the agreement that is being referred to, and I look at it in terms of an operating agreement. Um is going to um, you know, assign responsibility of who's who's gotta get the notices out the door. Uh um on the annual basis. There are a lot of technical details. Some of those technical details are still. Being worked out. One area where we have um been pushing, a little pushing back and forth with the Department of Health is. Do we have to notify the families of students? And my position has been that we don't notify the families of students at Tolman High School in Pawtucket and Tollgate High School in Warwick. Uh that's not a school department responsibility. On the other hand, those schools are not water operators the way that we will be. And the second agreement is to work out little details like that so that it's very clear whose responsibility it is. Um what David is, or Mr. Ferrara is asking is essentially that we can. Finish dotting i's and crossing t's in the documents so that we can get. Not just our part of the benefit, that is the water system up and running here at the at the high school, middle school complex. Which is going to happen very soon, but also so that we can finish the uh uh part with Rockland Oaks. And get reimbursed for part of our expenses. That are for the benefit of Rockland Oaks. In other words, um they are essentially going to be helped. Subsidize um our water system to the extent that they're going to be drawing on it. They in turn are gonna be getting money through the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank in order to do that. So it's it it's, it's been a lot of work. Um again, I wanna give Mr. Ferrara. And Mrs. Dais a lot of credit in that they have put together money from the Department of Health. Money from the Department of Education, bond money, um money from multiple sources. To get both the water improved here at the high school and. Potable, drinkable water for the people at Rockland Oaks. At the lowest possible cost to the town of Situate.
Any other discussion from the school committee? Do you feel the need that we need to make this motion even more? I mean, I feel like you read it.
Right, he's, Mr. Ferrara has read it.
Does anyone have any questions?
I can get any, I can get him. I I'm sure that he will send me uh uh an email um with what's in it. Or if it's in the notes that you circulated with from me before, then I already have it. Um and we'll make sure that it's reflected exactly the way he read it um in the minutes prepared by the clerk.
And I have a so moved. Do I have a second? Do I have any more discussion from the school committee? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Ferrara.
Do also, we don't, we want the infrastructure bank as as well. Uh it's probably voting on this in in February and as soon as they give us the money, I, there's many things we wanted to do. So would you entertain a motion to uh. Accept change order number one to your contract with Iain Uchello for the benefit of Rockland. It's the amount is. Thirty eight thousand four hundred forty six dollars on the condition that Rockland pays it.
Uh do I have a motion?
We're good doing that without it being.
Uh if you look at the agenda item, the agenda item was written broadly enough to cover everything that we were gonna do tonight with regard to this project.
Do I have a so moved for that motion? Or do I have a motion of what Mr. Farrar has mentioned with this change order? Oh, that can make a motion then myself to accept the change order to the amount that that was mentioned by Mr. Ferrera. Do I have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Lastly, um. We would like to request Rockland to uh take the option to for this four thousand dollar. Change order option, whatever you call it in their contract. Oh, it's subject to, well, I I would, you'll do that when. Have you discussed your, that point?
No, it's on the, it's on the agenda. It's on the agenda for tonight.
If you do do that and you move to further.
Let's do it. Let's do it. Let's, let's do it um right now. It's it's item number G eight uh G eight. Um and what that is, is it's a.
So I make a motion to take um item G eight, approval of water line to the concession stand out of order.
Thank you.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? All in paper. Aye.
I, item G eight on your agenda is to approve a water line that would um be connected to the water system. That is going to be in place to the concession stand um in the amount of four thousand dollars that was, that is. Under the Rockland Oak contract and we would be paying Rockland Oak for it. Um the reason for doing that is to do it now is because we're doing all the others, the the rest of this work for this project. Um everything is gonna be on site to do it and if we're gonna ever do it, um we should uh do it now.
Do we know when that would happen?
It will happen at a time when school is not in session. Um one of the bugaboos that um um. I have insisted upon throughout all these wonderful twenty five people meetings is that um. That the first priority of the school is to operate as a school, not as a construction site. So that's why construction on this project, construction frankly on another project, the fire alarm project. We are all doing them during non school, non school hours. So I can't say whether it will be done during. April vacation or whether it'll be done during the summer, but it will not be done during school.
Do we know what this is for?
Wait, Erica, when they run the pipes um from the well down um down to Rockland to um. Hook up next door, that's when that work for the water line for the concession stand will be done. It'll be done at the same time as running the pipe for next door.
Correct.
Do we know what they're going to use this water for in the concession stand? Does anyone here know what that?
Can't address, I can't address.
I can speculate. I mean, any concessions, I mean, I've run concessions stands through. I didn't even see, thought you were a kid back there, girl.
So um basically just to have some sort of water to clean, you know, if we use any. Um I need, we have the grills that we use in the back, if we use any utensils or anything like that, just so that we maintain safety and cleanliness.
So with that, there's gray water runoff. Do we know where that gray water's going or grease traps? Like, where's this water going?
Once it's. It wouldn't, I mean, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have grease, I mean, you're talking.
Well, you said grills, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, I mean, we're not washing down grills, you know. I mean, at the most, we've, I think last. Fall, we used the grill maybe three or four times and we're not, you know.
So where would this water go? Does it go into a septic system?
I mean, I don't, I'm not a, I'm not a septic engineer. That's a J question, probably. You know, I would assume there's some sort of provision for that somewhere near there. I don't, I don't know.
We don't know.
I mean, there's grass there.
Gotta go somewhere.
Is the grass watered? It must go somewhere, you know.
I, I, it's a legit question. Like, do now, do we now need to run this runoff of this gray water, if you will. Into a septic system or like, I don't know where it goes.
I mean, I would have to imagine you must have some sort of water that's taking care of that grass and it must go into a something. I don't know. Again, I do a lot. That's beyond, that's beyond my uh my expertise.
It's just more expense that we're not aware of or that I'm not aware of.
Yeah, I mean, again, that's, you know, we, we mentioned the water source because obviously all of this work is being done. So it would make sense to put it there, you know, I mean, to us, it's, we operated without it. But ideally, it would be nice to have.
Do, I'm just concerned about, okay, so now we have this water and then someone's gonna come back. Oh, we need another, you know. Eight thousand dollars because now we need to pipe it to wherever this water goes.
Again, that's a J question. I don't.
So should, do we have time to wait for this vote? So until we know where the water's going?
I believe it's still, well, I don't, I'm, if the superintendent is correct, I suspect she is, that it has to be done whenever. That uh that pipe is going to be done and that's not gonna be done during school.
Correct.
So I would suggest you have at least one.
Uh Dave, do you know, is it, is it February vacation or April vacation? Uh, Dave, do you know, is it, is it February vacation or April vacation?
That testing, so.
So it'll be April.
I think it's realistic, it's summer.
You're at least a month out, so if you want to get that answer from the engineer, although I suspect he's a water engineer, not a septic engineer, that's totally fine by me. I just thought I the question's excellent, frankly, that answer.
Yeah, that that gives us plenty of time to, for Jay to get the information to answer the question um appropriately, Erica. It's a good question. Let um the Director of Operations research that figure out and then he can give you um a full presentation on that. But that does give us enough time for for you to approve it and for us to stick with the timeline of that um being done when the pipe down to Rockland um is being done because the digging up of the that area, the running of the pipe, that's all gonna happen at the same time because it's cheaper. We're already pretty doing it.
Sure.
I think that's most likely.
So can you make this, sure this goes on the next agenda in case they have it? Okay.
Of of course, I, you know, I, the superintendent has indicated that she will charge Mr. Martin with figuring out what is our responsibility for disposing of the gray water and we'll have more information at that time.
To be clear, I, you know, I support having water to the concession. I just want to make sure what other unintended consequences we're running into.
I would just like ask the chair in the committee that it is understood that if you want that done, you're paying.
Correct. I understand that.
That is a credit to the bank, like, you're not paying for that part.
I get it.
Because they'll say, why are we paying for that? So.
Understood.
And if you don't, if you had any other questions, I was happy to stay, but we have nothing further.
I think, I think we're good and I'm going to, I would like to table the water line to the concession center. We just know where that water's going afterwards. Thank you. So that brings us to um administrators' budget presentation. Sorry to make you guys wait. And if you could pull that up on our handy dandy screen. We are back to the I'm probably not even going to remember what we already did.
Never mind. Okay, uh, I'm just gonna start because mine is quick and very little, so I really hope that you can approve and fund uh what I'm asking for, which is um if you scroll down. Thank you. So in terms of salaries, I'm asking for um then they're all just estimated costs based on what we did with S R funds and now we have a curriculum review cycle. So what I have there is just the cost for substitute teachers, for teachers to write curriculum. Um, I want to just kind of preface all of this by saying that we have done this work this year, but I've asked every building to give me some funds to do the work that we have been doing. Um, and what you see in their budget is a reduction of that cost, so we're kind of just moving it to a central office so I can kind of plan for the entire district and make sure that it's equitable. Um, so twenty six thousand in salaries, it's really cost of subs and some teachers working on the review and revision of the curriculum. Next page is just the benefits, that is a formula and it is for eight hundred thirty five dollars. Next page, I'm quick, I promise. Um, so this is um for again, just for purchase services, we looked at the P D costs that we had to pay consultants to come and do a P D for entire staff and paraprofessionals. So my estimated costs are coming from there. Um, keep going. None, highlight that. Next. Um, and then we, I had fourteen thousand. I wanted to be able to, with the adoption of new curriculum, usually they are associated costs that come with the professional development. We are doing science and social studies. So I just accounted for two hours of P D for the entire staff at a time that is convenient for the schools. I, that's just a big bundle. And then one thousand dollars for supplies because when we do P D, we usually spend out of pocket, so I'm hoping for a little bit money so we can uh get markers and poster boards and usually some kits when we do social emotional learning. None. None. So the total cost that I'm asking for is sixty four thousand and again, just the majority of the requests were from S R and based on local budgets. I did have, uh, which I kind of did not talk about, uh, the mentor mentees uh cost that is a part of the teacher contracts and it's a part of our way of developing new talent that we get. Uh, we provide mentors for every new teacher and they get a stipend. So that was also accounted for in the salaries. Yes. Any questions for me?
Just our first round of of budget requests and it, I, and for me, it's just, you know, absorbing it, I read it, but you know, it's just to have to think about this and wait for the whole picture to come together.
Okay.
And we know where to find you if we've got questions unless someone here has a question right now. Usually Colleen has one.
I definitely did not overestimate just on F Y I, this is a bare minimum, other than one thousand dollars for materials. You can cut that if you really need to. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome to our new school committee members. Great to see you here. Um, so shout out to the Situate High School Department Chairs, our Athletic Director, Sal Gil-Samino. It really is a team effort to put the high school budget together. Um, we have gone, this is my ninth year as principal at the high school. When I first took over, it was like a one pager of this is what it was last year and this is what it was. There was no thought behind it. There was no data. So we, and thanks to Stephanie and Lori, we really have come such a, such a far way with really truly having site-based management and principals really are given the autonomy to um ask for what we need. Um, so what you'll see here is truly a needs-based budget at the high school. If a teacher uh or department realizes that they don't need a certain textbook, they'll, they'll delete that money and usually that money goes towards something else of of an increase that we've seen. Um, so it truly is a needs-based budget here. If we can go to that first slide. Um, we're very excited that we have uh sixty eight students who are currently enrolled in Situate High School. Oh, sorry, I'm going to start with the negative. So we have, which isn't negative. We have forty one students who uh live in Situate and they're attending other uh public schools and charter schools um for some career and tech education programs. As you remember, we were spending millions of dollars in out-of-district placement just a few years ago. And thanks to the support of um the school committee and Lori and the teachers, we have uh, we have sixty eight students here. We have forty one students who are currently enrolled in other schools. Uh, you can see the biggest number is still Ponte Gansett. There's thirty one. Of that thirty one, we had two freshmen attend Ponte Gansett High School this year and one just came back last week. So we officially have one freshman at Ponte Gansett High School.
However, we have twenty three eight freshmen here now.
Yes, exactly.
I gotta head, I gotta head, I gotta head.
So um, we have certainly, you know, our goal was really bringing the C T E programs here because it's best for Situate students, no matter what. And the byproduct of that could be um, you know, potentially being in a day where we're in the black and we're actually making money and and we're there, we're, we're there. So forty one students, um, our team, including myself, we continue to meet with any application going elsewhere. Um, and we have conversations with families and those conversations are usually, we want you to make an informed decision about the best high school for your child and we hope it's Situate High School. Yep, next, thank you. Here's a breakdown. Um, I'm sure some of you crunched the numbers. Those numbers actually don't add up, but the sixty nine students is correct. Here's a breakdown of uh currently enrolled. Um, these are students who are coming, do not live in Situate, but they have been accepted and are enrolled here in grades nine through twelve for one of the career and tech programs. So twelve seniors, fourteen juniors, twenty one sophomores and twenty three freshmen. So the numbers are trending in the right direction. You can see the demographics of where our students are from. Most of them are from Johnston. The second biggest uh draw is from Coventry and then it goes West Warwick, Warwick, North Providence. We have students from Charahoe, from uh Cumberland, from East Providence. So students tr- truly are uh traveling from all over the state to um come to Situate High School, which is great. Um, we do have twenty eight applications for next year. Not of all, not all of those students will be accepted. Um, we also, not all of those students choose to come here. So we continue to get applications throughout the summer. We usually cut off new enrollments as of um October first. So we could see, be seeing applications and enrollments all the way through October, which makes it a little bit difficult. Um, I was talking to Ms. Morrell back there. We're remembering my first couple of years here many years ago and when school committee members were saying, well, give us a number, like, how many is it going to be next year? Is it going to be five? Is it going to be six? So um, we're, you know, we're settling around, around twenty for sure. These are the uh tuition projections here. So again, with the seniors graduating, that would leave us with fifty seven students. And again, if we anticipated that um twenty one came here, we would, we'd still have more enrollment next year than we do this year. So we will be in the seventies and possibly eighties um next year of students who are attending here from out of district. Uh, and then here's the numbers of our current eighth graders. We're seeing an uptick in students who are applying to private school. So about ten of the twenty have applied to Catholic schools and private schools and the other ten have applied to Ponte Gansett. So tomorrow night, we have our C T E open house. We have our eighth grade move up night. If you're, you're free tomorrow, it starts at six o'clock in the auditorium. It's a great night. Every Situate High School teacher will be here. Um, and it's really, again, the, our way of communicating to the eighth grade families, everything about Situate High School. Um, so that's tomorrow night. Any questions about any of that before I head into the boring stuff? Sorry, it's not boring. We're good?
I'm just thinking, like, pretty soon we're gonna have to have, like, an admissions officer.
Yeah, right. Yes. So and we are fortunate to have a C T E coordinator and I have to give our school counseling team a shout out and Erin Erickson's one of our admin assistants. She is like, like, as if she works at a private school. She's amazing um with the incoming applicants. Um, salaries, as far as right now, unofficially, I'm hearing that unfortunately, our family consumer science teacher, Ms. Morton, may be retiring at the end of this year. Um, in order to to fill that position, we were approved this year for a fifth C T E Academy in education. Ms. Morton is uh driving force in getting that approved. So we'll be looking for a part-time in family consumer science has kind of been absorbed in her position to education and culinary. Um, so I'm sure you've been updated with the building committee. We're looking at a proposal right now of updating some of the residential culinary equipment that we, that we have in that room with some actual industry um culinary equipment. With that said, we're looking, we're, we're thinking about replacing Ms. Morton with a part-time culinary teacher and a part-time um education academy teacher. So um, that's our projection right now. Professional services, um, we will have a student in the high school next year who needs some M L support. Um, English is not that student's first language, so um all of the principals worked with Stephanie. We've divvied up the cost of that M L teacher and that's in the the budget, so that will be a smaller increase. Uh, I'm going to scream from the rooftops about the police and fire details. For whatever reason, every year it's cut. And I know how much it costs to, and it's expensive to have our police details, graduation, homecoming, sporting events, especially football events. Um, this year, that line had twenty six hundred dollars in it and it cost about at least fifteen thousand dollars in police detail. So I'm hoping that that line stays there so that way we don't have to look at teaching and learning light items and move that over to a police. Right? Yep.
Good point, but.
We always pay it, but right. Okay, next slide. Property services, um, we're looking at maintenance and repairs. Uh, there are smaller items in the building that at the high school that need to be updated, need to be replaced um that don't necessarily fit into the the capital plan. Um, so we're looking to increase uh the line item from just simple, like upkeep of the building from ninety seven hundred to thirty thousand. This includes looking at the auxiliary gym, the smaller gym, um, looking at just, again, taking families on tours, looking at uh the the treads on the stairs, being worn out, like things just needing to be replaced and and upkeep. Um, so you'll see an increase there that we're asking for, um, an increase in maintenance contracts. And then again, repair of building and maintenance contracts, um, asking for twenty two thousand from eleven thousand.
Do you kind of keep track of, like, oh, this is going to survive for another three years, but do you keep, like, a five-year um file, if you will, of what's coming? Of these small things that don't percolate to a, you know, to the
We, we work with Jay Martin on that. For me, I usually have my summer wish list, so like, you know, we're going to tackle the auditorium. So that's something that we know that within the next three years, the auditorium media needed to be replaced and it's amazing. We were able to fund that. We have a brand new projector in there, brand new sound system. I know the rugs need to be replaced in there. We know that the the seats, as Lori has talked about before, the seats need to be replaced. So we have those items and we try to spread that out within three to five years of, okay, now, let's, let's, does this go into the capital money or is that something that needs to come out of local? Um, Lori and I have had conversations with Sal around athletics, which we'll get to, and looking at those replacement equipment, like those big ticket items that aren't necessarily tied to, like, girls' basketball, but things like a scoreboard that we're going to be looking at. So this year, you'll see in a, in a slide, looking at a three to five year of that athletic equipment replacement and and what exactly are we asking for? Um, overall increase in transportation, which includes athletics as well. Um, not only the, you know, dismissal and arrival uh for our local budget, but also the um athletic busing costs have risen um quite a bit. And then supply. So social studies um is meeting the new graduation requirements, which include proficiency in civics. Um, so we've been working with Ozzy and our Department Chair, Amy Grunt, and we are um hopefully purchasing a new civics uh textbook next year. Our world language, again, instead of buying Spanish one, two, and three all in one year, we've thought out and that's been a three-year process. So now, next year, we are looking to replace the Spanish two books. Um, we replaced Spanish one with, I think, some leftover spring. We were in the, we were in the uh black at the end of the fiscal year, so we were able to scoop that up and make the purchase of the textbooks. This year, I'm not sure if we're going to be in that case, so we'll need to uh budget for those Spanish two textbooks. Family consumer science, this is the education pathway. We're partnering with a nationally vetted company for curriculum. It's called Educators Rising. Smithfield uses it for their education program and that includes resources, scope and sequence for the three courses that we offer in our new education pathway. There's also um a C T S O, which is, for lack of a better word, a club, so DECA, HOSA. There's an education C T S O that those students uh will participate and get their work-based learning hours. So that's included in there as well. And then the last one is an increase in the Running Start Program. It's an amazing program through C C R I. It used to be funded through Prepare R I in Rhode Island. As of about three years ago, Rhode Island said, we're not paying for that. It's on the districts. So if a student gets accepted into the C C R I Running Start Program, which means that they spend their senior year at C C R I, but they still receive a Situate High School diploma, it costs about nine thousand dollars. We pay for parking fees, tuition, courses, textbooks. Um, but next year, we have a plan where we're going to require them to buy their textbooks on Amazon through the school district and then we're going to keep a library here. So we'll ask for those textbooks back and we'll have a running library. Again, we spoke to athletic equipment within this, within your packet. You should have seen a couple of items from the high school. One of them is a letter from Sal that gives you some more detail around Situate High School athletics. Another one is a spreadsheet that has clickable links and justification. So if you're wondering, well, why, why this supplier, why this textbook? There's a spreadsheet in there that you can click on that our department chair has put together for you. Um, hardware, uh, we're looking at a new, two new curricula next year, one in E L A, the one that we The one that we purchased, which is a requirement from the Department of Education that we have to have greenlit, nationally vetted curricula. It's phasing out. It's actually owned by the College Board. We didn't really love it. So we're, we're not too sad that they're phasing it out. We are signing up with a new curriculum for ELA. And we're also looking at a new curriculum to replace our seven-year-old Agile Mind. Has it been seven years, I think? Six or seven, five, five, four, three, no. Um, so we, Ozzy's been working with Jen Goff and myself in the math department and the ELA department. And we are purchasing um, new curriculum for next year. And then, sure.
So I, for the general public, cause I, I learned this from Ozzy's like, it can sometimes be the perception that the school's always getting new curriculum. They're always getting new curriculum, like, yeah, I'm sick and tired of paying for this new curriculum. That's sometimes what I hear when I'm trying to get a cup of coffee. And um, Ozzy was explaining to me that, you know, curriculum generally has a life cycle of five years. Um, and then as new things come out and or higher quality education comes out, it is to be expected that every five or so years. And, and correct me if I'm wrong with that, Ozzy, that we, we do need to start getting new curriculum. It's not like we're gonna keep curriculum for ten years or fifteen years, cause it's, it's just not up, up to date. So I'm just wanna say that out loud as people say, what? They're getting new curriculum? We just paid for all this curriculum, but this is how it's supposed to happen.
Yes. And I'll also say that for Agile Mind, the math department at the high school were champs in implementing it with fidelity. So I think they wanted to back out right away. And we said, we, let's implement it, let's see how it goes. It's been five years and they truly have implemented with fidelity. There's some pros and cons to the current curriculum. Um, ultimately, we're not seeing our math scores increase the way that they should be. So the Agile Mind curriculum that we're using, data showing us that it's, it's just not best for Situate High School. So I think, you know, we have an obligation to look at the data and make those decisions on, is it time to, to switch over?
Is that the curriculum mail, their shirts on for, like, talk about it with
Yeah. They did. Something about like, we're, we're not fragile with agile or something like that. Okay, so dues and fees, um, we have moved into D1 for our wrestling program. And because of that, we have been competing in tournaments all around New England. Um, and that, we've seen an increased cost due to that. So we're hoping to increase that line item. Um, we also are looking at those CTSOs that I mentioned, which are tied to career and tech education. This is where students get their work-based learning hours. There's a potential where that ten thousand dollars could be reduced as this is our first draft. And we could potentially put that into the categorical or Perkins Grants that we receive. And then here's the first stab at the high school budget. This is where we were uh, last year, one point five three eight. And right now, this proposed budget is one point six six three.
That's, I was gonna ask the same thing.
Stephanie?
Mr. Cosmowitz, can you do that off the top of your head? It's okay, we can figure it out later.
Okay, any questions while Steph is helping with that?
No, you guys have obviously taken some real time. It's, and it's so nice to see, like you said, it's, it's a collaboration. And I think this district has moved mountains in the budgeting process from where we were when I first started to where we are now. That like, especially with site-based budgets. And um, again, this is the, this is what your request is. Well, as you know, we're gonna do everything we can to fund it. But difficult decisions need to be made. But it's a very, um, you can see a lot of thought and effort went into this to what, what our, what our kids need.
And look at the cost that you're asking for the, you know, CTE programs, but look at the results that we're getting from that. And I don't know of any other department um, in the town that is bringing in money.
Sure. To that point, I've had an eye opener as well that, you know, district wide, we've had a lot of unexpected, like out of district tuitions due to special education or other reasons. Um, and you know, that money, I think we're fortunate to be able to, to offset the, you know, the, the end balance. Um, which is great. But again, years ago, we're spending millions of dollars to foster. So the fact that we're actually taking in money, we'd be in much worse shape, I think, district wide, should we not have these programs? And again, my, my theme has always been, these programs are amazing. They're the best in the state. That's been our lens and
And our lens has always been, and I, I know you back this, our lens has never been to bring kids into our district. And not that we don't welcome them. It's always been about retaining our own and providing them the opportunities. Cause when you started, we didn't have those opportunities. Anyone who wanted any of these programs left. So to see in that short period of time, how much it's, it's kind of amazing.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Oh, forgot to take, alright.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you. So uh, while we're queuing that up, middle school does a similar process as to the high school. So we work with our department chairs, our content leads, they submit their requests to me. I compile all the object, um, you know, the fifty six thousandths, the fifty seven thousandths to create an overall uh, picture for you. So we'll go through the highlights here. So overall, the um, first thing you'll see in the um, the budget that I entered into Tyler was the middle school's portion of an MLL teacher. So we had talked about that among um, the elementary schools as well. So our portion of that, that is a point five district-wide MLL that we're, we're requesting. And the middle school's portion um, of that, according to uh, Caitlin's numbers, which she got from central office, was that fourteen thousand nine hundred sixty one. Um, I did wanna note though, that the student that we're, the student in question um, is, is tech, right now, the student is going into high school, into ninth grade. However, um, splitting it up among the schools, we thought, you know, I, we, I don't think we encompassed the high school in, in, in that. No, did we, Caitlin, five, five ways? We did do it five ways. So we did it five ways, just so uh, we all, in case we, we received a student that needed MLL services, we already had a budget in.
So I don't mean to interrupt you, Dana, but I just want the committee to understand that we currently have MLL students in the district. And the way that we have provided support and services for those kids is we um, I hire the person as a contracted um, employee. That way, um, we don't have a point five MLL certified teacher, point five on the staff, whether we have kids or not. And the MLL population can be transient at times. Our numbers are so small, we potentially, if we hire a point five on staff, could end up with a point five teacher who potentially could have one or two kids. Or it could go the other way. They could have eight kids and we need point eight. That's why we have hired as a contracted uh, position that we can adjust the hours as the needs in the district change. I just needed school committee
Any, any specific questions? When Caitlin comes up for North Situate, you can ask, speak to her about this, because she took the lead on this and then gave us the dollar amount as administrators to add into our budget. All right, also in addition, um, looking at the preliminary numbers coming out of fifth grade in the district, we are um, hovering right around that one hundred. Um, the enrollment, I think in your, in your packet said a hundred. The active students in Power School had a little more than that. I wasn't sure of the, why the difference there. Um, but due to contractual obligations, when we get over that hundred um, enrollment, we need to add another section. So I have met with uh, some of the staff members that went through this in prior years. And so I am right now, based on our, our enrollment, requesting an additional two uh, point five FTEs. Uh, ideally, that one would teach the math and the science, and the other would teach the social studies and the English. We can get away with that in sixth grade, based on certification, gets a little trickier in seventh grade, but I don't wanna go too far ahead. Again, these numbers fluctuate and we probably won't have a more definitive answer until we get closer to the start of school. I think that's just where that's going to be. Um, however, budget-wise, it, if, if we don't budget for it and we end up needing it, it's going to hit in other areas. Because again, like all of us, we started a zero-based budget and we build from there. Uh, I don't have padding in this at all. So this is, these are our numbers. Uh, moving on to our uh, summer, no, no, go back. I'm still talking about the summer program. So uh, what, what we've been doing in previous years really hasn't been successful with our summer program. And so I've met with our, our CTE uh, people, Ms. Travers and Brian Shan. And we talked about a biomimicry math camp. So we're really honing in on our uh, new technology around biomimicry. Uh, we have an enrichment course going on right now with our eighth graders that we're testing out. And we hope to make a biomimicry math camp as a full day math camp in August before kids come back to school. Parents really talked uh, to us about why they didn't wanna participate in the summer program. It was only a couple hours a day, transportation was an issue. And while we're not including transportation, it will be a full day, full week camp, where we hope to include, in the morning will be, we'll switch off. So in the morning, we'll have a biomimicry camp in the morning. In the afternoon, will be a math camp for one grade. And then we'll switch it around and do it something different with also a social emotional uh, team building in the middle there for lunch. So we're looking at that in August. And uh, Mr. Shan and Ms. Travis are going uh, getting some additional PD for a second year in biomimicry in the summer, in July. So they'll be all ready to share that new information, should we receive the funding for this math camp. Also, another big jump in the salary, uh, the coaching stipends for middle school. Our, every year, we have a hard time filling our coaching positions. We have several open right now for our spring season, which is set to start next month. And Sal and I agree that a lot has to do with the salaries. They haven't been increased in a long time. Where uh, he reports that we're lower than uh, most other places around us. So his recommendation that I followed was to bring our middle school coaching positions up to the same level as the high school assistant coaches. And so that increase overall is um, equals five thousand eight hundred fifteen. And that will um, again, measure up with the assistant coaches for the high school.
How does that measure to middle school coaches in the, our, our comp schools and or neighboring areas?
So
I have
If you don't know the answer to that, I don't know That's okay. That, so I, I did give Sal this information to work on, and this is what the proposal he came back with. And I, I went with his proposal. I do know that he is in talks often with surrounding schools, particularly um, you know, Ponte Gansett. And with, because we have some coaches that teach there, but coach here. And we, he networks throughout anyways, as far as, as far as the, being athletic director. And he does report that they are low and they haven't been increased for as long as he can remember for our middle school coaches.
I have that data and I can send it to you also.
Thank you. Um, that's it for that slide, thank you. Again, that's, I think, self-explanatory there, talked about the MLL. These increases here were um, we did have increase in facility service contracts. I know I do receive that the s- uh, school year twenty five is higher than the uh, school year twenty six. There are areas in that Tyler budget where facilities or operations still hasn't had, haven't, hasn't put in an amount yet as of publication for this.
Take care of that.
Okay, thank you. Same thing here, this is um, again, on the operation side that Stephanie and I talked about that you were taking care of. Okay, thank you. Uh, supplies, uh, we really, I talked to my staff about this. This is, this is a good number. We, the Chromebooks, I think historically might have been in a wrong area. We really made sure that Chromebooks were in the right UCOA. So I think a lot of it had to do with previously uh, different UCOAs not being used in the right way. The only because we are learning so much more about UCOA. And here, equipment, this is, so we have, since I've been at the middle school, we have outfitted our gen ed classrooms with all new student furniture. Can always remember Colleen saying how
I was gonna say, this is your wheelhouse.
This is your wheelhouse, right? This is when we hear that kids are ripping their clothes on the, on the, on the desks. So that's not happening anymore in any of our gen ed classrooms. However, special ed now uh, needs to be updated in the same way. So that is, that allocation is for that. Also, in the event we do have to add um, a section of sixth grade, that's included there too. I, we would have the, the two teachers work out of the same room. So I'm not looking to outfit multiple classrooms. It's just one classroom and that would be twenty five student desks. Okay. And the Chromebooks was also included in that previous one. Dues and fees, um, a lot of, so the increase here is due to the increase in athletic fees, since we're not with UCOA anymore. Interscholastic League has taken over middle school sports. So we're bound by their fees now. All right, total request, you'll see that there, say it right up front. I don't have a percentage on that, so
But those numbers are accurate. I know you said some of your other ones were differential things, but these, the bottom lines are the bottom line.
Yes, these are the, yes. And the only thing I, well, yes, Colleen, however, there were, at the time of publication, there were still some facilities and operation items that were not included. I talked to Stephanie about that and like electricity, for example. That was still a zero when I put in there and I, I know that would have to be added. Um, so that's, that's what we're looking at again, ten percent on transportation. That was added in by Sal. Because realistically, when he looks at our balance of home and away games, because of Interscholastic League taking over middle school athletics, we have to have a more balanced approach to how many home games and, and away games we have. And the last bullet there is for our projected enrollment for next year. So that's hovering anywhere between a hundred to, hundred to a hundred and eight. But we'll see what happens, uh, luck can happen, as you know. Yes, I think that might be it. Any questions for anyone?
Again, a lot of work, Anthony.
Thank you.
Back to your team as well.
Okay, hello, everybody.
Hi, Caitlin.
If you can go to the first slide, just get right to it.
Um, so
Everybody's a roll girl.
Yeah, so to talk a little bit, I get tired late at night, so I'm gonna try to just go for it. Um, so the point five MLL teacher um, for the district, again, we divided that by five. We never know what the enrollment's gonna be. Currently, there's five students. It's not a grade six, it's K one, three, four, and an eighth grader. Um, I know the superintendent talked a little bit about that. Um, unfortunately, given a fluctuating schedule and hourly pay, we're having trouble finding somebody. Um, so I just gave you some cost comparisons. That's what we offered to start fifty per hour with travel time. If that person had stayed the whole year, that's the cost it would be. That person who we had was offered a position up to point six, you know, in another district. Um, I, the superintendent did work very hard to negotiate with her to keep her. So that's that cost in the middle where we would have been um, if we had kept her that year with the final. And then that's what it will cost if we make it a point five MLL position. We're even open to making it a one-year-only position that way. If for some reason our numbers did decrease down, then we would have to, but
Isn't that right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all based on how many periods that, that they need. So, and that's dependent on each year when they test. They might test out or um, lower a period. So that's just the breakdown that I wanted you to see. It's currently under um, object code fifty one, but Stephanie said it would move to salary if that was um, the case. If you could go to the next one.
Is, is um, Wait, five enough?
Right now, yes, I, I, it's doable um, for right now, especially because the students just took the access testing. Um, so our hope is that some of them will decrease their, their required um, you know, period. So it's not something we've ever had here. Um, but given the need we had this year, the struggle that we're having keeping somebody, um, we felt like we had to think outside the box and advocate for those students that we need that support in place for them. And this is much more enticing to somebody a point five than an hourly um, position at fifty an hour, so. Um, so next is a special ed para. Um, currently, this is listed as a one-year-only that was um, given. It's an IEP requirement um, for a student there in kindergarten and will continue with us. Um, so I wanted to advocate for that to not be a one-year-only. Again, it's hard to hire somebody for that position for a one-year-only. Um, so again, there's the cost figures for it. Um, the position is currently not filled. We have other para professionals that are filling in for this position right now, which is putting a strain on, on everybody. Um, so if you go to the next slide. Um, so before we go to that, I do wanna provide you with So before we go to that, I do want to provide you with information about another salary. It's just new information that we've received around numbers of students with disabilities and their needs, which we didn't have in time for the presentation. So this would be an intensive slash bridge classroom at North Situate. So it'd be an additional special educator for North Situate. So just to talk a little bit about it on the targeted. Targeted population is students who are alternately assessed. Special education students who have intensive needs, academic, functional, physical. Some require additional care that we currently offer, communication devices, toileting. These students would access general education setting to the greatest extent. However, they do require a significant amount of individualized instruction, small group and one-to-one setting throughout the day. Right now, we have six students in the district who would receive services through this program. We also tried to look back at some of the pre-K kiddos at Clayville and if those students would eventually fit into this program. So benefits would allow service providers to better schedule for one location. Possible offer small group instruction. Currently, a lot of these students have PTOT speech, all those things, and they're coming everywhere. Just a cost per pupil for out of district placement. If some of these students, we can't meet their needs, those are the figures there for you. Those will include transportation, CNA, one-on-one, and equipment. North Situate is a one level, so it does meet ADA, you know, compliance and allow for that. That's why we chose North Situate. We would evaluate, reevaluate the program once students go to the next level and kind of design the program to fit the students' needs. So if we saw, you know, a group of students who had autism, we may tailor the program to meet their needs. And again, potential income for tuition students once the program is established. So I just wanted you to have that information. It's new to us and just kind of thinking outside the box of how we can support our learners and ones that are coming into the school. So, so summer programming up here, it was previously funded through Esser. We are now putting it in our budget. So each of the elementary schools are requesting $10,000 per school. We did a two full week camp, hands-on activities, yoga, we had art classes and definitely small class sizes. So we're hoping to run something similar to that.
Ozzy leaned on you guys, like, give me some money. I'm just kidding. No, we get it. These are struggles, right?
Yeah, and it was great having, you know, with Esser, but the program ran well last year, so.
I was gonna ask what the outcomes looked like.
Yeah, the feedback was really great and I know Ozzy has some. If you could go to the next one. So purchase professional services, I'm not going to read line by line, but asking for, you know, an increase there of $10,000. That looks at catering and computers, interpreters, translators. We did have to add more money to that line as well. So just to take a look there, the diagnosticians is that ABC staff. And so I always ask for the 40 grand, which, you know, carries for an entire year for one ABC staff. And again, I'm always pushing to train our paras, our, you know, special ed paras. But sometimes that specific training is required for students who we don't usually know about. That just, you know, show up and we need to meet them where they are. If you can go to the next one. So this is property services. We were able to make some cuts here. But again, just to see not much of an increase here, things are kind of staying status quo. But anywhere we could, you know, cut, we did. Again, Jay helped us with some of these numbers.
I just wanted to jump in on that and I should have asked this earlier too. So I know, like, we have stuff in capital and Jay takes care of a lot of that. But like, we guys, we do ask you guys to wear a lot of hats, but my hope is that Jay is involved in this process. I mean.
He fills a lot of those lines in for us and we'll ask him, like, okay, why the increase here? Why? So that way, we can answer questions.
We get site-based budgets, but we can't expect you to be.
Exactly. I'm not the expert on. If you can go to the next slide. So nothing there for code 55.
My other thing I have to say too, I'm sorry, I get this, I keep, is coming through and it's just probably my own ignorance. Copier leases, should I just open a company because the numbers that I, like, is that just what it is? It's that expensive for. Everybody.
No, I know.
Is that like?
This is actually a huge improvement from what I thought.
Okay. I, I examine. No, I don't, I, I.
I examined the contract, redid everything.
You've looked at this, there's no other cost savings way or like.
I, yeah.
Okay, that's enough said. And I didn't mean to put that specifically to you. Yeah, thank you.
So this is supplies. And again, I showed you the request and some of the savings on that same line. This is mainly because of the new ELA curriculum. We're in our five-year cycle, as you guys talked about and Mike talked about as well. And that curriculum right now, if we were to pick from one out of the three, it's around that 70 to 80 grand ballpark to get K to five up and running, which is a lot cheaper than when we started five years ago with ARC. Just want to point that out. So that big increase there is one of the larger ones because of that. And this is equipment, a little bit of an increase here. I'm trying to every year get two new cafeteria tables. So that's where the increase was there and furniture. So I just wanted you guys to see that line.
I know Mr. Hassel spoke about like some of the bigger equipment and how does this, Laurie, I'm kind of jumping over to you. And maybe I should know this answer, like cafeteria tables, like, they're not cheap, right? Like, and I don't mean, are our budgets structured in such a way that there is, don't get excited, I'm not giving out millions. Do you, like, do these really belong coming out? And I'm not trying to get away from site-based, but some of these other things that are not related to curriculum and instruction, necessary by all means, right? Do they really belong in their budgets?
They really do.
Okay.
Because they're in the buildings every day. They know when they need these new desks. They know when they need new cafeteria tables. They know when the chairs are broken and they're going in. Like, it goes in their budget, but it's part of that bigger picture that you are all gonna see. We're gonna put all this together.
Like as far as facilities, we have to have.
And you're gonna say, yes, we need to make sure that, I've been at North Situate. The laminate is pulling off the top of the cafeteria tables, right? Like, that's a priority there. We might have to wait for the desks somewhere else, right? No, and those, those are the hard things.
Yeah.
Sit in a building, but bottom line is.
It's gonna come.
Committee, yeah.
And when we, you know, they were giving away grant money and things like that, we had to choose from. We bought new tables, you know, for classrooms, flexible seating, we, we tried to focus on that. So we're trying to slowly, you know, replace things and replenish. But again, we have to do it in small quantities and things like that. So dues and fees, no changes. And this is just my total request from last year as compared to this year. An increase of about 53,000. Again, this, the cost is, is really from that ELA curriculum increase, which we know is a need, but I did try very hard to cut in other areas if lines weren't being used or combining lines. You know, I had two supply lines and I hated to say bye-bye to that money, but there's other things that, you know, we need, so. No, salaries are separate. No. Yes, we have to keep those separate. So that's, that's just like the bare bones. Any questions? Okay. Yes, that was me in case you asked any specifics. It's just like an, and yes, an extra specific.
Hi, everyone. How are you? I'm gonna go through this kind of quick because elementary looks similar, though there are some things that are different, particularly in the beginning. The first thing I wanted to talk to you about, as you know, Ozzy worked really hard to get Hope a math coach this year. We had a little bit of transition in the position and like getting a person in there consistently. But we have someone who started with us after the first of the year. And I, we don't have like the Rycast raw data to show the changes she's making just yet, because it's only been like six weeks. But I feel like my staff has really felt the impact. So as you can see in those quotes, those were just a few things that were submitted to me from like grade level teachers who have been working really closely in collaboration with the math coach. We are hoping that this will be able to be grant-funded again next year. But just in case it's not, we've definitely seen the value in the position and want to make sure that if it's not grant-funded again, that we're able to support it within the local.
What's your gut tell you, Ozzy? No, okay, just, I, I get it. No, there's no.
Literally a coach. And so some of the things she's really doing a lot of like face-to-face time with teachers and helping them have like stations in their classroom and working on building like the independence of the kids in being able to move through the classroom and them taking control of the lesson. She's working on pacing. She's doing a lot with like our curriculum maps right now and kind of looking at the different modules and what makes sense most to put where, so that we make sure that the modules that are most important for Rycast are being taught in the beginning of the year and kind of front-loaded. So she's doing a lot of that really important work because she can see the whole picture of the curriculum, K to five. So yeah, that's the, that's the math coach. Kind of new for our district and it's been really, really exciting to be able to pilot that position. The other salary that I am asking for, this is already currently happening this year because it got added into a student's IEP. We collected data, I worked with the special ed director and we really looked to how much one-on-one assistance is this child receiving daily? And we found that he was receiving that assistance for most of the day. And with only six paras at Hope total, I just didn't have the support to be able to give to one child every day. It would have impacted across the grade level. So I worked with the superintendent, we posted for a one-year-only, he's got his support this year. But he's not in a place where he doesn't need that support next year. Though if the program at North Situate does happen, he would be this, one of the students that would be eligible for that program. And then his staffing could go to support that program, which would need para professionals anyway. So it would really kind of, kind of just be like a reallocation of the funds. I know you've seen this at all the schools now. I did just want to point out, I did not have an MLL student at my school this current year, but the two years prior I have. And based on like the access testing, he receives two hours of service a day. Those two hours a day over the, over the course of the entire year, I ended up budgeting around $14,000 for that one student. So it, it really is kind of seemingly reciprocal at that point. And like Caitlin and so many before me have said, it just, when you start building in like the benefits and the consistency and being in the union, it just makes that position that we're paying for right now anyway, that much more marketable to hopefully be able to keep somebody.
So I'd be interested in seeing, and not the second, right? Some historical data as to what our numbers have been in this district. And I would. Yes, yes, for utilization, right? Because not every MLL student has the same requirements. And my second piece was, what would happen? And I don't know the answer, this is, this is a genuine question. What would happen if we had a teacher, if we hired such a teacher and then we didn't have any students? Are they certified to teach other things? Are they, I'm just. Does that make sense what I'm at? Okay.
Like they could help with intervention.
Exactly.
I think that makes a lot of sense. It is a little tricky right now. Well, ju- just for example, I had a family reach out to me, their child's not even five yet, but she will be five in September, coming to kindergarten at Hope or potentially going to private school. The family speaks Italian at home pretty much 90% of the time, they said. So that was one of their big questions was looking to, if such a public school can't provide this service to really help our child acclimate, then we'll need to look elsewhere. So that has been like something, like as kids come in, we want to make sure we can always have that person to support, so. Summer programming, I know you heard this already. One, how'd you guys know? We found that, that last summer was the first time that we ran like this kind of like camp full day option. And just, we, I've historically has been at Hope because the half-day programs went over to Hope Pond after. Seeing the number of kids that actually showed up for this year, like, was incredible, like attendance-wise difference. So many kids signed up in the two years that I've been in the district prior. And then the classrooms would be like half-full on any given day. The kids really came and they had the best time and I loved how it supported the whole student. Like we had the academic piece, but it was also the yoga and community organizations like Sense Critter. So there were just so many valuable opportunities for the kids.
All the elementary school, elementary school.
Exactly.
Go to the Hope. Because of that rec program across.
Two years before, this past summer, it was always at Hope because it was half-day, so they, we could walk kids over to Camp Pond. This was a full-day program, so they didn't have to go to Camp Hope Pond. So one week was at Hope and one week was at North Situate last year. We kind of split it up so that people like driving their kids in was not always to the same place. So these are the, like, the 53 object codes, very similar to where everybody else was kind of talking as far as like movement for catering and the ELL teacher. The one piece I want to point out that I'm kind of proud of, and this goes to like what some people have said in the past. In the past at Hope, we've always had two ABC staff for individual students. We were able to kind of transition one of our fifth graders. So you're welcome, Dana, you won't have this, this class next year. But he just recently has kind of, we like worked his time down and he is no longer receiving that support and is doing incredibly well in the classroom. But like we've, and she has taught him how to take breaks independently. He has like a feelings chart on his desk. So he's learned through that ABC support staff, all the skills that he needs to be able to function fairly independently in the classroom. So that was a huge like chunk in savings that I was really excited about. Property services, again, these were done in collaboration with Jay. There was nothing really out of the ordinary. There were like a few lines that didn't have money on them, like that glass line that we just put a small amount, just, just in case, because we find that those incidentals do happen. And this really just has to go, like the increases are cost of living increases.
I did want to clarify too, just to jump back to Colleen's question, just so everybody knows. Jay works with, you know, the building administrators to put those numbers in. And then I go back and check the bills and the contracts and then I may revisit that number. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood and was calm about it.
You're good. No changes to 55s. That had to do like transportation and that kind of thing. 56 is our supply line. I tried to do, some of this is like maneuvering, like that Hope web-based software and databases. I combined lines, like one program was being pulled from one line and one was being pulled from another. So I just tried to put all the money, you'll see on like the second page of this, I tried to put all the money in one place so that I wasn't pulling from numerous different UCOAs. A number of our curriculum materials, we were fortunate to be able to purchase out of Esser last year, like our Hegarty writing and our science kits, so those now have to go back into local budget. And then there's also the new ELA curriculum that we're piloting and really trying to research and be thoughtful about the decisions we're making. So the principals have reached out. We looked at like the green light ed report programs. We looked at high-performing districts in Rhode Island. We've been reaching out to those districts to go visit the schools and actually see the curriculum in action. We've gotten piloting materials for the teachers to, to like look at and use in their classrooms right now. And that committee is also administrators and teachers that are going to those other districts to see the programs. We went to North Kingston, Ozzy and I brought a group last week to look at wit and wisdom. And it was a powerful experience. We actually found that the things that we complain about with ARC, they were seeing with wit and wisdom. And if we hadn't had that experience to talk to them, we probably would kind of would have gone in blind and then ended up frustrated, so. And then you can see where that, like the 5,000 decreased on another line, that things combined. Under equipment. So this past year, my furniture line, I don't know if anybody's been to Hope recently, but our conference room is disastrous with chairs and the conference room table. So we got some new furniture for that room to try and kind of, you know, that's where we have like our IEP meetings and some more difficult conversations and to make it feel like a more homey place for the adults who come to visit our building too. They'll be arriving next week, hopefully. So, and then next year, I'm gonna start the process of the cafeteria tables because ours are very old, wheels are falling off, they don't all fold up anymore. So that'll be my next thing for furniture. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. There we go, huh? No changes to dues and fees. And then requested budget, I did take out just transportation from these numbers, but everything else that is in like my, I don't know what you call that, but the one, zero, 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 my object code is all up there. So there is an increase for this coming year. However, the $70,000 of that is in that ELA curriculum, so. What do you guys think?
I think, so I, I have an observation, so I wanted to ask to all the principals, when you all decided. you all decided to get into education, all the administrators, did you ever think you'd be in front of a crowd of people talking about fifty-fours, fifty-sixes, fifty-eights? Like it's like, aren't you proud of them Stephanie with all the, like honestly, like how, that's not why obviously any of you got into education, right? But to be able to kind of morph into that and this looks great, this does, thank you.
If I may, I was going to say, speaking of proud, Lori has done an amazing job to understand UCOA and get her budget together. I'm incredibly impressed by Lori, but I just wanted to say that. Not that I'm not impressed by all of you, but she, she had to learn it fast, so.
You better know it.
She had to learn it fast and she's, she's done an amazing job. We all are.
For those of you who haven't met Lori Booty yet, I was at Clayville for a long time, but now I'm back as interim principals. Did my best here, so bear with me. I really tried to wrap my head around this whole process and kind of did the same thing as the other principals as far as like trying to collect money in that were at different places and put them into one category. So I can't work from all different lines. So I was like trying to collect money so I could look at one amount and kind of know how much we have. So the first thing, like the other principals, asking for a point-five MLL teacher for our district. We currently have two students at Clayville right now. So, so I think it would be beneficial and I'm not sure about preschoolers or other kindergartners coming in, but it seems like the numbers have been increasing in other districts, so. You know, I'm not really sure what will happen, but these, I think we have a first grader and a third grader, so at least in the next few years, we're going to have, yeah, them, so. Another salary that we're requesting is a point-five social emotional support counselor. We currently have a, a one person one day a week. And then we have Dr. Mitchell, the school psychologist, two days a week. We have two pieces of other people that collectively are two and a half days. So we're requesting another point-five person. And they don't usually take the health and dental, but if they did, the total would be forty-two thousand, six hundred twenty. And I just, if you go to the next slide, I just wanted to show you that the SLL person, SEL person was two and a half days, was a grant funded, that is, will no longer be funded, which are two of our people. And they service now ten individual students at Clayville, four small groups and three whole-class instruction to support the tier-two needs at Clayville alone, so. I kind of went through these lines and some things were upped, like everybody I know on the catering line went up a little bit because we had only a small amount for one teacher, like luncheon during the holidays. But then we were thinking like, at the beginning of the year, Teacher Appreciation Week, teacher morale has really been low. So we've been trying to put these little things in place that kind of make the teachers feel, and it, they don't require a lot, you know, like, but just something, a little bit goes a long way. So we all kind of agreed that that would be something we would be looking to do. Other numbers just went up a little bit. What I did that was a little bit different on the ELA curriculum was, as you can see, on the web-based ELA program, I added the techno, the online technology piece there as opposed to just one big lump sum for the new curriculum. The online portion of the program that we would get, there was, you know, we have three different quotes. So that was around the median amount for the online digital portion of the, of the new program. So I included it there, adding, asking for the same amount because that would replace the ARC that we have now. So the MLL teacher is there. In the Smart Find Express, I didn't ask for anything there, which would be in thirty-two hundred, because now we have Tyler and that was in a separate line, so I kind of got rid of that. Tutoring, I had no idea what that was, it hadn't been used in years, so just kind of got rid of that. Property services, again, Jay was super helpful with that. Things went up a little bit. I'm not really sure of, of the request for the repair glass, I don't really know, but he must have some idea as to what's needed for that. Same thing here. The rental of equipment, I, we mustn't have anything because he wasn't requesting anything, things went up a little bit. No changes in fifty-fives. Nah, I know, I'm getting there, right? Supplies went up a tiny bit. And I, we added a line for general office supplies because there was nothing in that, that, that wasn't a line before, so Stephanie helped me add that line and put a little money in there for the, for the next budget, for general things for the, for the office. Other supplies, we went down on, I went down on a lot of those library books and things like that because with getting a new curriculum, I'm thinking a lot of things are digital-based and with so many new books that students would be getting in as a result of the ELA program, I was thinking that we wouldn't be purchasing a whole lot of other things. For that, I tried to identify on the web-based programs and software, what we actually use those for. So I know it was helpful for me, so I thought it would maybe be helpful. The Go Guardian is where the teachers can see exactly what websites that kids are on and close them out of it when they, they don't belong there. The iXL supports the math and the ELA, which has been super helpful. So other things went down a little bit to try to save cost, heating and fuel.
Yeah, I'll go there. Yeah. iXL, that's still the go-to. It's been around for a long time, I just, a lot of this stuff, I'm like, what's that? What's it?
It's really good.
Yeah, no, I, I'm going back to my kids like, uh.
As some of the other things.
Yeah.
But it really holds its end on those skills.
Yeah, yeah.
And I find it so easy-
Yep.
You can take that map on iXL, click on Eureka Math and it will line up every skill-
To that, perfect.
To our math program. And I would imagine, I haven't used the ELA a whole lot, but I'm imagining it's very easy to pinpoint what skills you want kids to do and, and match those into curriculum.
On the, on the equipment, last year's pupil-use technology hardware, which I assumed was Chromebooks, was fifty-six cents. I'm not really sure what happened, I can't answer that question. But seeing that we're trying to roll, like update teacher computers, student computers, not all at once, but like on an ongoing rolling basis, that I would request thirteen thousand to start that process. Again, there you see, the Tyler went up a little bit, but that money came out of the Smart Find and kind of transferred into this one. So I wanted to show, Steam went up a little bit, music went down a little bit, you know, just trying to find ways to save. The, oh, so I took the money from all of these fifty-sevens, the instructional equipment for special education, we left there, just because sometimes students need certain devices and things like that, that aren't around the Chromebooks and things. But the math equipment and social studies equipment, which wasn't a lot of money, but I figured with the Chromebooks, that would be getting, that would kind of suffice for that. I couldn't think of other math equipment besides the curriculum that we have, that we haven't bought already, that we would need. So I kind of took that money from there and to add to the, so. Dues and fees, no changes. So in twenty-twenty-five, I kind of broke it down by, I think I put those words there for myself, so I would remember. You can see the two thousand twenty-five budget request and then the two three thousand twenty-six. Again, professional, oh, I think I added the salaries in here as well. Yeah, yeah, I didn't, I didn't really know. Although everyone's been so helpful, I can't thank anyone enough, I would never have been able to do this, you know, without a lot of time and, and things like that too. So my overall changes look a little bit higher, but I tried to break the ELA curriculum up into different areas and try to consolidate and all the salaries as well, so.
Oh, I got lots of questions. No, I just want to say you did a fantastic first budget present, presentation, thank you. And to all the principals, I just want to say, one of the pieces I take from this is obviously you are all in charge of your own little fiefdoms of your schools, but it's quite clear that you collaborate together to kind of, you, you realize that each little island operates, you know, within this amazing district that we have and we have competing needs and, so it's really nice to say, it's really nice to see that you're getting the bigger picture and supporting none, one another and the entire district doing so. So kudos to all of you.
I believe that concludes our administrative budget presentation. Yes, Mr. Cosmowitz, are you here to make our lives miserable?
Yeah, George Cosmowitz, East of Hopkins Road. Just pointing out that these proposals by the building administrators, whom I respect each and every one of them, I even know one of them, range from eight and a half to twenty-three percent increases. Those are not realistic proposals.
Thank you.
So with that being said, I want to thank our principals for being here. We do have some more items on the agenda, but by all means, you guys have been so gracious waiting and flipping around. I hope that's okay that I say that Lori, but like, go, run, run for the hills if you can.
Absolutely, they should go home and get-
Not that I don't want you here, I don't, I certainly don't want you to think that, but it's, I'm sure you're all glad it's done and thank you.
I want the committee to know, they should go home, they've had really long days, got a lot of people sick, a lot of kids and a lot of staff and they're doing a yeoman's job of keeping things running, so.
Yes, you are.
They're tired, I'm sure.
And thank you all for being here and for presenting.
So Mr. Anderson, our next item involves you. Next on the agenda is Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank Emerging Contaminants. Are you going to speak to this? John? Were you going to speak to the item number five, the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank Emerging Contaminants?
App before you is the grant agreement with, I believe it's with RIB, the Rhode Island Infrastructure Investment Bank, to provide funds to do the work that has to be done at North Situate to eliminate the PFAS problem. The school, North Situate was the one, I think seven schools in the state of Rhode Island identified as having an issue with PFAS contaminants. And fortunately, we're able to get grant money to go forward to rectify that system. I know that it is not going to involve drilling a well. Exactly how it will work, I would defer to Mr. Martin if he were here. But this is so that we can access that grant money. There are various conditions on the grant money, for example, we have to have a sign indicating that, you know, this is a project funded by Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank and there are things like that that we have to do. You previously approved a consent agreement that said you would fix this problem. So this is the second part of it, coming up with the money to actually do the fix.
And we have in our packet is proposed language change to that agreement. Am I, did I read that correctly?
Pardon me?
There's a language change to that agreement, I thought, I see two language changes. Is that to go to this agreement or is that something else?
Can I see it?
Yeah.
Sure.
So the full, I believe the full contract is here.
Correct.
And then there's a status agreement between, appears.
Yeah, what that is, that's, that's the change that we're proposing to work with RIB and ask to RIB to rectify our experience with RIB is that, once they do a contract, they don't change it, but we're in the process of trying to get that done.
So is this on for, I thought we were approving the language change, are we approving the language change?
No, we are approving the, we are approving the underlying agreement.
Is this language change in that agreement?
And my understand, my understanding is that it hasn't, we're still working with RIB to get that into it. I'm going to be honest with you though, RIB is more of a take it or leave it, you have to fix your PFAS problem and we're the guys with the money, so you're going to do it the way that we set, we suggest.
So you're recommending, so you're recommending these changes?
I would like to see these changes, but-
If they're not there.
If they're not there.
We would still recommend that we pass-
Right, because otherwise you're going to have to pay, you know, you're going to have to cut a lot of other things to pay for this, because you've got to fix this problem. We signed a consent agreement to that we would do it, so. You know, the, once you drop, this is the other ship.
I was just trying to be clear of why it's this language changes in our package.
So I'd like to make a motion, I'm going to try and do this right, that we approve, that we approve the EC slash SDC grant agreement with the changes as recommended by council. However, if those changes are not allowable, or you fill in a word there.
Accepted.
Accepted, if those changes are not accepted, we would then move to pass this grant agreement as proposed.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next on our agenda is a contract for the concession stand.
This is actually, this box is going to go on top of the concession stand. Again, this is, it's been a very busy few weeks. This is a contract that we're still in the process of reviewing. We'd ask that you approve it, subject to, to being signed off on by the superintendent and the chair of the school committee, but this is for the press box piece.
So I also have a few questions.
Sure.
But do you want to go first, Colleen?
No.
I did see that the cost, the original cost has come down.
And I can't, I can't speak to the constitution.
I can, I can speak to that. The original cost has come down and Bianca Mancini and I, I agreed after the PAC meeting that we are going to try to schedule another meeting with the vendor and reduce that price even more.
I also know that we originally thought we were going, going to have a hundred and thirty thousand available, but now we have eighty-eight.
That's correct, and that was the conversation I had with Bianca, and that's going to be the driving force between me for meeting with the vendor to have a direct conversation, this is how much money we have and that's sort of it, so.
In this contract, and help me if I got this wrong, I'm going to back up. With our concession stand, we still plan on moving that concession stand to a different location, correct?
I can't, I can't speak to, again, I want to be really clear with wells and PFAS and concession stands, that I'm the district lawyer, I'm not the director of physical plant, I'm not your engineer.
Well, you're the only person standing in front of me, so I'm-
I understand, I understand, so I will take all the bullets. I would be really, you know-
And maybe the superintendent knows the answers.
I, I, I understand, I'm not trying to be disrespectful.
I understand, I get you.
In Situate, I, I'm like becoming like everybody else and wearing many hats.
So here's, here, here's my concern, and I don't know why it's coming up now. I don't even, do we even need a certificate of occupancy, so to speak, with the concession stand?
I would defer to Mr. Martin on that question.
Are we talking about the concessions?
Correct, I, I'm starting, I'm starting with the- Correct. I, I'm starting, I'm starting with the concession stand because the press box is going on top. So I'm starting with the concession stand.
I, I would suggest that these questions wait until Jay returns and we put it back on the agenda and he can answer those for you.
Perfect. So we've got time to do that, to, to table this until next month? Is that okay? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
All right. Does anyone else on the school committee have?
That's fine. Thank you.
That brings us to, and, and I just want to say that these questions came to me like just today because normally I like to ask these questions before a school committee meeting so I can get the answers. But I, I didn't have an opportunity to do that. Going, I usually try to get these answers before school committee meetings because it's not always, this can, can be a waste of people's time. That brings us to item ten, which is the first read of policy eighty-two fifteen Situate CTE admissions. I'd like to make a motion to accept the first read of policy eighty-two fifteen.
Second.
Is there any discussion, any questions about this policy?
Mr. Hassel, anything you want to say on this? You don't have to. Is there anything that? Yeah. I know it's like your baby, so I want you to.
Shout out to Ozzy to help with this and Erica and Colleen as well. We did not have a CT acceptance policy. We looked at, in John and Lori's suggestion, Davies, who this policy has actually been challenged at the RIB level and Davies won. We also looked at Pontigan's at high school and Charahoe. And it's much needed. We have been accepting students and now we have policy behind it. So we really compared it. Our teachers took a look at it, our interventionists who look at every record and application that come through, they looked, they looked at it as well. And we feel really good that this is going to be one of the top CT acceptance policies in the state.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next one is I'd like to make a motion to accept the second read of policy eighty-sixty Student Code of Conduct.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? These are online. I'd like to make a motion to accept the second read of policy ten twenty Ethical Standards and Principles. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Like to make a motion to eliminate policy twenty-twenty-two Assistant Superintendent for Instruction and Curriculum. The reason why we wanted to eliminate this is that it is a job description and we don't feel like job descriptions, which change often, belong in policy. It's, it's a job description. We looked at many other schools and job descriptions just don't belong in policies. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On the school committee first?
So I guess my question would be, I, I agree job descriptions don't belong in in policy, so to say. And I know some of these are very antiquated, that some of the positions that are listed in our policy, obviously, we don't even have anymore. And I don't want to go on a, on a long tirade about this, but I guess my, so the function of a school committee is policy and budget. And one of the things that was delineated in policy was who was employed by this district. So if we're eliminating all of these policies, and again, I've said this multiple times, it's never about a person, it's about a position. So fast forward five years from now and the superintendent decides she wants to buy, you know, or he wants to have six principals, two assistants, and where does that go from there? If we have nothing in our policies that state the the makeup of our administration.
That, what I'm hearing you say is it's really about an org chart.
Yeah.
Rather than a policy.
But if it's not, and I know John, come on up, John, I can see you're wearing. And I'm not trying to challenge this. I, I certainly understand where, and it's, again, I don't think you're going to try and get, you know. But.
Well, you, you've got power in a couple of places, budget.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't hire, I say I, the superintendent, the position cannot hire and fill positions, create positions that are not budgeted for.
But you could, or they, he, she, the superintendent could allocate funds from one position to put it into another.
Not if you do, not if it's spelled out in your budget. No.
No. No.
Absolutely not. You people control the budget.
Yeah.
And if you say that there will be one assistant superintendent or three business administrators or no curriculum position.
Yeah.
You control the budget and that's the lever that you form and you approve the budget.
Okay, and I'm not trying to.
That's why you approve.
Yeah, 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 no, and that's, I need that clarification.
Where your le, your leverage is. Think of the budget and policies as the guardrails
Yeah.
you set on the administration, but your lever is the budget.
Do we?
Yes.
And maybe that needs to be updated to kind of, okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That answers my, that answers my, thank you.
Richard Finnington, Ridge Road. I, I looked around general law sixteen dash two dash nine. I think this is where this came from. If you look at this policy, it states this general law. It says the school committee, they have overall policy responsibility for employment. And this goes to these positions that you are eliminating here tonight, these, you, you say job descriptions. I, I would agree part of these policies, the first part of all these policies are job descriptions. Matter of fact, twenty years ago, when it came up in the school committee meeting and they approved this, I questioned it because of these qualifications. And they said because of this general law, they had to put it in. Now you're taking it out twenty years later. You're, or really twenty-five years later, you're taking it out.
Yeah. It's interpretation possibly of the law, right? Laws are interpreted, I'm guessing. But it's, if it's also in our org chart, which is another thing that the policy committee.
Yes, I did see.
We're, we're trying to like clean it up. If it's already somewhere else, we don't want it in two or three places. Because our policy manual is so huge compared to anyone else because it's redundant. Terribly redundant. So we're trying to simplify it. So I hear what you're saying is part of Rhode Island general law, but it's addressed in the org chart. Like, so we're trying to see where these positions are. We can change the org chart, which we have to update. I haven't even looked at that. I don't even, I'm afraid to look at how old that is. But the way this is written, you know, basic responsibilities, who they report to, their qualifications, that's what's in this policy.
And where, and, and I know this is, there's an answer. So we have an organizational chart that's part of policy. And then where are job descriptions for all of these positions? Right? Like, I'm just trying.
When, when these, when they're posted, are there not job descriptions when they're posted?
So so where would, so.
It really gets back to your conversation around a HR person. That's where the job descriptions would live. That's where they live in most organizations.
Right. So, because I, I'm, and I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not trying to argue this at all. I'm trying to figure out. So we have all sorts of instructional policy that would be at a school level or at, like, but where does the policy, and I'm not saying it's a school committee policy. Where do the policy for the requirements, obviously, there's general law that mandates for certain positions and this and that, but where is that then housed?
The job description?
Yeah.
Where, where they live right now is on the computer in a file. They've been written out, they've been written in there in a file on the computer. They were here before I got here.
Yeah, no, and I'm.
They sat with Jen.
Yeah.
At the time, then Carnival. Because we didn't have HR. They should sit.
Yeah.
In an HR office.
Yes, they should, okay.
Also in that general law, it says that the school committees establish minimum standards for personnel. So when this superintendent goes to hire somebody in this administrative organization, how does she know what standards do you where she needs to hire if it's not a policy?
We'll have to look into that, add it to our policy committee.
I think that's why they put these positions in the policies. That's what I was told back in two thousand.
By Mr. Watson?
Yes. Five years later, now we're changing. If you want to change the policy, that's fine, but eliminating the policy, I'd, I'd really look at this.
Well. Yeah, thank you.
And that changed the purview and role of school committee superintendent and building principals. And it really chopped everything off of school committee other than policy and budget.
This is true. We are not in the HR business. We don't hire. We used to, but as of recently, we, we don't do hiring anymore. It, it does rest on the principles.
But the, but all, none of these positions here are hired by, well, not by a principal, though. Do you know what I mean? These are most.
I just wanted to add yes to the accountability conversation. So the responsibility of hiring the personnel that are not assigned to a school has gone to the superintendent and in previous sixteen, I think that's the place that has been replaced with the Accountability Act. Yeah, but.
Yeah, stop, lady. I did.
Night, sleep time. But I did want to add that we are taking the job descriptions and definitely creating hopefully an HR folder with upcoming and revised job descriptions. A lot of those jobs don't exist and have been re
Classified.
Yeah. Classified, so they don't really belong in a policy handbook. However, we are adding one for the, based on the Accountability Act for the principals. We have already added one for school improvement teams and their roles and, and regulations around that.
Sure.
We're also, we have updated and we're bringing back to the second reading next time the roles and power, I think it was called powers and duties of school committee.
Yep.
So that also has a lot of language around your, I guess, requirements by law and responsibilities. But I wanted to also add that as a part of the school policy subcommittee meetings, we researched every district that we knew of.
Okay.
There is not one district that has fifteen job descriptions as a part of the policy.
Yeah.
I understand the leverage that it does give the school committee and I thought maybe that the org chart is a place that you can revise, you know, as needed based on your personnel.
Yeah, no, thank, you know, and I, I certainly don't want to, I'm not trying to buck this by any means. Do you know what I mean? Yeah, it's, it's just that piece of, and I do, and you're right.
And job descriptions should and will be updated periodically, right? As responsibilities change, new things get added, some things get taken away, it gets replaced with technology.
And shouldn't have to come back to a committee.
To a committee, but policy, right.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to speak?
I was going to simply say job descriptions, I, I'm not aware of anywhere where job descriptions are treated as policies. What the general law is referring to, or at least how it's been interpreted by some school districts, is a process that is a human capital policy that talks about what we're looking for in people that we want, we want to hire. And then how do we go about the process of hiring them? I believe Little Compton has a human capital policy, Charahoe has a human capital policy. And they're.
And I think that speaks to Mr. Finnington's point of.
Exactly.
Right? So maybe.
That's something that the policy subcommittee can look at as part of its work.
They will be Charahoe or Little Compton with regard to that. It's a process of how do we go about hiring people. Not, this is the job description for vice principal at the middle school.
Thank you. Any more dis, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Like to make a motion to eliminate policy twenty, twenty, thirty, school principals for the same reason of job descriptions?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Like to make a motion to eliminate policy twenty thirty-one Assistant High Middle School Secondary Principal?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Like to make a motion to eliminate policy twenty eighty Director of Grounds of Building and Grounds for the same reason of job description?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Like to make a motion to eliminate policy twenty eighty-one Assistant Director of Building and Grounds?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I like to make a motion to eliminate policy twenty ninety Director of Special Education?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like to make a motion to eliminate policy twenty ninety-one Assistant Director of Special Education?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This one's a little different. I'd like to make a motion to eliminate the policy eighty forty Honesty and Integrity in academic work because this is now in the student handbook code of conduct. It's already somewhere else.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the last item for tonight is like to make a motion to, so that we can have a discussion to accept the MIU between Mary Manning Morris and the Situate School Department. Discussion?
So I, I, I will start with, I am not in favor of this. I think this sends the wrong message to the general public. I think that we as school committee folks are elected to represent in negotiations, which has been historically done since my time here and prior to that. It's no reflection on the individual, it's the process itself. I, I just, I am not in favor of it. I think it sends the wrong message. I think we're entering into negotiations thinking that we need extra help. We haven't even met with anyone in negotiations or to even begin this process yet. So why would we be looking for someone on the outside who's not a member of this committee to step into the role that is, is for, for the school committee? As far as paying someone to do that, we have a multitude of boards and commissions in this town that many good people volunteer for and don't receive any type of money doing so. I, again, it's, what's presented here, and I don't know where this figure came from or who decided on that. It's, two thousand dollars is quite nominal in our grand scheme of budget. But I find it ironic that it's the exact same, same amount of money that a school comm, a school committee member receives as they're stipend for their year's worth of work as a member of the school committee. Obviously, none of us are here doing it to get rich. So for those reasons, I, I absolutely oppose this. I would much rather see these, after listening to those budget projections, I'd rather see this two thousand dollars be taken and put into the catering budgets of all four schools at four hundred, at five hundred dollars apiece. So, oh no, I gotta do it a little different, or four, four times five. Who just said six?
I didn't say anything.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm like, it's not that late. And, and put to that type of money. I, I strongly disagree with this.
So this is, this position is a consultant because I have seen that people are not, were not clear on that. And we have had consultants in the past and I do think it's our responsibility as a board to look for ways to support our roles as elected officials and obtain the best possible talent that we can before we enter negotiations. Ms. Morris has a skill set of being an educator for over thirty years, as we know. She has experience in labor contracts as an employee for over thirty years. She also has in-depth knowledge of this contract, which we did not have. This contract was a struggle last time and I would like it to not be a struggle this time. The teachers deserve the best that, that we can provide for them. And I, I want Mary, Ms. Morris comes with a skill set, critical thinking. comes with a skill set, critical thinking, not only that, but she has saved this district a lot of money in some of the language that she came up with in the last month's contract to, to make it worth her while. The two thousand dollars is a conversation. It, it's, it can change. And she also has time to do an abundance of research of which she has proven to be very good at. To save up time for, you know, between the superintendent and the director of finance and anyone else. She's, it's a great augmentation to the team that we have, which right now is myself and Ms. Hartla Fauci, who is new for school contract negotiations. And to your point, like I, if, if she were to do it for free, would you be okay?
I, I just think that, um, and again, I don't want to say she, it's, it's the premise of it. So it's, it's absolutely not about a person. It's, it's not about, I think that, you know, you talk about experience, we, we do have people entering on our negotiating team. Obviously, we have someone, I'm not going to say how many years they've been an educator, but quite, quite a few as a teacher, as an administrator, and now as our superintendent of schools. We are represented by a legal team that I can venture to guess, and it's just a guess, have probably negotiated hundreds of contracts. We employ as our, our own financial officer, someone who possesses an MBA. So I think we're well-equipped and well-versed with the money that we spent for the team that represents us that we don't need to bring outside people in. You mentioned last time being very contentious. I, I don't know why we'd want to bring someone in. That was part of that other, this is a new day. This is a new piece of things. If we were at a place where our negotiations were stalled or not moving forward, I would not be opposed to having anyone come in that can help bridge that divide. But I don't think, I think it's, in principle, this goes against what, we are the public body. And we as a school district represent and possess the, the depth of those that we employ to enter into this and with fair negotiations with our teachers. So that's how I feel. I mean, everyone has to vote their, their conscience, but I think when we're here to represent taxpayers, taxpayers, taxpayers. There, there, I've been doing this for ten years. The, there's never been a consultant that's been brought in for contracts. If you want to refer to Ed Myers, he was a consultant to the entire district. He ran our bus programs. He did a whole bunch of other things. He was a retired superintendent, but his job wasn't just to come in and consult on on negotiations with any of our collective bargaining units.
Any other discussion?
Richard Finnegan from Ridge Road. The school committee's the elected representatives. I said this before. I think the motion on the floor tonight should be adding each and every school committee member to this negotiation. Because if this ends up in court, each and every member will have to be there. Every member of the school committee is not going to be able to attend every single negotiation. I understand that. That's why each and every member should be part of the negotiation team. If you're part of the negotiating team, then when you go in the executive session, you already know what's going on. You wouldn't have to waste time. I have nothing against Mary Manning Moss. Think she's well-qualified. She was a teacher many, many years. But I don't know anytime ever that this has ever occurred that the school committee has brought somebody in as a consultant. If you don't think you can do the job, well, then resign. We have a special election. And we'll get somebody who can. But I would, I would ask this to be put on the agenda next month, next meeting, at each and every member of this committee to negotiating team, as it should be. Because this is between the school committee and the teachers.
I'm, I'm going to say something.
We'll wait for Mr. Finnegan to be done, and then we can continue with our.
So I, I, I'd hope you table this or vote no, which I believe you should. Because we didn't vote for you to give your power away to somebody who's not elected.
Thank you. So you want to go first, Lori?
Yeah, I don't think this is about someone who can't do the job. I think this is about just asking for some advice. It's not about, she's not going to be making decisions for the negotiations. She's giving advice. Anywhere in the business world, you have consultants. You have consultants that give advice. That's all it is. It's not about the person who can't do the job. And I kind of take offense to that. I'm sorry, no, no. I'm sorry, because you're saying that the people at this table can't do negotiations and to resign. That's not what this is about. We're just asking someone who had experience to come forward to us, just to give advice. That's all.
And to be clear.
It's not about, it's not about decision. She's not going to be making decisions on the contract.
To be clear, while this is not public comment session, it's still part of the public comment. So you've already had your turn, and I, you've already had your turn. We hear what you're saying. And we're, I would prefer not to have any dialogue back and forth. We, we hear what you're saying and we make our decisions on what we've heard from you say, what you said. So thank you for that. And I want to also comment on what Ms. LaFauci was saying is it's our job to bring as much as we can to, to help us do the job better or efficiently. It is not about us not knowing what we're doing. Mr. Cosmowits?
With respect, I, I disagree. I'm on the side of Mr. Finnegan. I think a vote in favor of hiring this person is a vote by the school committee to tell the public that the school committee is not capable of doing the job that the taxpayers elected it to do. This is a core responsibility, the school committee, policy, budget, contracts, that's it. You've said that all other responsibilities have been taken away. This is core. If you can't do it, then step down. Because a vote in favor of this says we can't do our job.
Thank you for that. I still feel firm that, in, in my opinion, I'm just one, that this does not speak that we can't do our job. And I also want to say that we have two people, just, just to explain to the community on the, the negotiation team, but no decision is made without obviously full school committee approval. Those people who go and negotiate at the table come back and, and share that information. They have no authority to make any decision when they're negotiating. It comes right back to the full committee, and the full committee gets nothing but a hundred percent input on any decision. There's no authority just with the, with the negotiation team, which right now is Ms. LaFauci and myself. Is there any more discussion?
I'm listening to what everyone's saying, trying to be a neutral body. And I listened to both of you, and I appreciate your feedback on that. I'll be honest, I'm a little mixed emotions on it. And I would at this point recommend remove this, put it on the agenda for March. If we have not started negotiations yet, we're bringing in a contract person to do things that we would normally be doing. So if it is not going well, we could reconsider, or I'm sorry, we, going well, but needing the feedback from somebody else who's been involved in it, consider contract then. But maybe if we should put it on March, that way we are started negotiations and to see how it is going forward at that point.
It's interesting because I look at this as preventative because of the last contract negotiations. And I think this allows us to come at these negotiations with as much, with as much talent and skills as we can garner. I still think it's our job as a committee to surround ourselves with the best talent possible. I, I am not a teacher, no, no one here is a teacher. And yes, we have a superintendent that has been a teacher, but it just brings a different lens. And like, why not augment what we have if we can to give our teachers the best contract we can?
So I, Erica, just to speak to that, so you're saying it as a preventative in nature. I, I disagree. I think.
I'm just responding to you guys saying if it doesn't go well.
Well, but, but I think that's, I think, I think that's, I think it's a new day. I think we, we've been elected as school committee members and there's people here to negotiate. We, you, you referenced that negotiations didn't go well historically. That's not always the case.
There's been historically just three years ago.
Okay, so I can speak to, there, there's a time that I've been involved in this school committee and you can look back. They've rolled the contract over. They, and I'm not saying that is going to happen. We have rolled our contracts over without any, it's one meeting. Okay, what do you think? This is what I want to, two and one. They're rolling over. So you're, you're approaching this like it's going to be problematic.
I want to, I want to ensure that it's.
I don't know that that's setting the right tone to either the taxpayers or the teachers. That's, I guess, right.
So you think the tone of if we had Ms. Morris on the negotiating team is gonna, is a, is a bad message because it's Ms. Morris?
No, no, and I, I've said that from the beginning. I said, that's, that's, that's not a fair characterization.
I'm just, I'm asking for clarification.
Yeah, so my clarification is that we are elected as members of the school committee. And Mr. Cosmo spoke very, very eloquently to it. We have very few powers. But those powers we have are, I don't want to use word fierce or whatever the word I'm looking for this late at night. And we, i- if, if in fact, and I, I, I'm pretty sure it's in general law that if we ever get to a place in negotiations with anyone that we weren't able to move things together, I would not be opposed to bringing anyone in to, to close those. But we haven't even started this process yet. So that's, 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 I mean, we have to, I, I do like what, and I don't know what the motion would be if we make a motion to table in between this or however it goes. But I think we need to give this a chance before jumping the gun and, you know, spending taxpayer money on something that we may not necessarily need.
And do you mind if I go first? Do we not typically, if something doesn't work out between the negotiating parties, bring a
We got a mediation.
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 Oh, yeah.
Correct. So I'm saying, so it doesn't.
Go to mediation if we don't have to.
That is correct. So I just, that's, it just doesn't end. It's not a win-win. It's, we go to mediation. Dave, do you have any input on this?
I, I'm, I'm willing to see how it goes and table it and see how the negotiations start and see where it goes.
Matthew.
Thank you for letting me go.
No, no problem. I'm just gonna play a little devil's advocate just because of the stuff that recently have happened over the summer. I think, I don't want to use fear, and I'm not putting it in anybody's mouth whatsoever. I don't think you fear the teachers. But I think between the situation at Hope and at Clayville, I, I can see both sides to wanting things to go smoothly because it has been rocky and pushback from the teachers, from Hope and the issues at Clayville, whatever those were. I see the side that you would like it to go smooth. But I also see the fact that if you go in there with somebody that has known, I think, and I'm not speaking for the teachers, I don't, I've, I think they're going to take it like you're trying to, not saying you don't have power. It's going to come out bad. Like hold over them that, listen, we've got someone that knows what they're doing and you're not going to mess with us because of the stuff that has happened. I think, again, like, like, again, I'm
Speak freely. We get it. We, we know.
Outside, again, not having to do with anything or that, but I think you have a new person that has not done it mixed with an older.
Thank you. More experience.
So I think, I think you're getting both worlds. So you're coming in with the knowledge from the previous contract. She's going to come in with the knowledge of fresh eyes that have come against these teachers before in their contracts. So I think you guys can work it out before having to call in backup. Because I just said, if you go into a trial with a lawyer, you're kind of saying, oh, yeah, well, I already knew I messed up. So I'm bringing him too. But if you go in there and you're like, hey, I'm just going to repeat what the judge has and maybe I could get away with it, and maybe I can't. But I think you're preempting. And I think they're going to push back more. And again, I don't know what their contract is, and I don't speak for anybody. But as a bystander with everything that's going on, I feel like that's why you might want some extra backup. Just so there's not as much pushback, but.
So with a motion on the, with the motion on the floor, is it appropriate, John, give me a nod, yes or no, that I make a motion to table? Or do we have to hear the other? So I would like to make, with following this discussion, I would like to make, to make a motion to table.
Second.
Any more discussion? You table. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Here's one more. You have one more thing?
Yeah, no, we're. We are at announcements.
While you're thinking about budgets, and I know I'm coming from Hope, and I know you're factoring in preempting enrollment, but when you guys figure out your budgets, will you be factoring in the possibility of K? Having two Ks and two firsts? Next year for Hope. I know it's.
We'll have to get back to you on that.
Looking at everybody's presentation and I was just. So I, I know it's based on enrollment and that's not going to be until August, but they want your, you want their money now. And they're not going to be like, well, if you get the enrollment, we'll give it to you. They want the bottom dollar now before we know what the enrollment is. So it's kind of a like, if you don't put it in your budget, like, I, I don't know how it works. If you don't put it in your budget, you're not going to get it. But if you don't use it, I don't know, like, how that works. I just had a.
An epiphany?
Because my tax, like, I get my bill from my cell phone and you pay that bill. But if you don't know what that bill is in August, you can't ask, like, you can't make the money to. I just don't want it to short your budget if thirty kids move into Hope. Or I adopt thirty kids.
He's going to adopt kids, just so.
It was table, my wife said no. Uh, no, it was going to be eight, just enough to have two first grades. And I only mention this because I have been having some issues with all those kids in one classroom, and my son has had two incidences this year with being bullied or, and or targeted by other kids. And if he has to go in and you eventually do cut the second grade, he's going to follow up and it will be like Clayville. So I was just wondering how you guys were going to factor in. Like, I don't want to use padding because other people, but I want to say, are you going to pad the budget or?
We are always at the risk of who is going to move into town and, and where and.
I just didn't know if you were factoring it into the budget with the possibility. Is there like a, like?
Well, tonight was just the first read of the budget, so it's at this level. We're a mile high on this budget. As Mr. Cosmo's already pointed out to us that it's like eight to sixteen or twenty percent too much. So we're just, we're just getting an overview of it. We're not into the weeds yet. So at this point, I don't see it being factored in with that. At this point.
Is there a contingency that, I, I don't honestly know how it works. There's like, I, I don't know if you've ever seen it, like, where, if it does, do we get this? I'm just trying to cover bases so we don't have last summer all over again. Not that I don't like staying here till ten o'clock with you guys, but.
So what?
I just didn't know if that's how that works or.
We'll have to later on look at the numbers where they are now, which could always change. How close are we to that red line of like, oh, tipping over? So I don't have an answer for you right now.
I was just wondering if you knew how it worked out. Thank you.
Thanks. Any announcements? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second, all in favor?